Rest of this year will can and may affect years. Down the road as Casey always likes to do it, I appreciate that. So with that, I will turn this over. We're going to look at approval of agenda. And Regan, is there any changes to the agenda from what you have on here?
Sir.
Right, look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved and just to let everybody know, Dawn and Ethan are joining us virtually. So with that, I will turn it over to Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, everybody for being here. Krista, thank you to her, you know.
Yeah.
Everything behind the scenes she's doing, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. And even, I mean, it's the little things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thanks, Krista. That's awesome.
Super cute.
So we will, I'll cruise through here, start with the budget strategies, which I shared with with council at the council meetings. Obviously, a work to maintain our current levels of service. Invested programs that boost efficiency and can reduce staff time has been a big focus the last couple of years. Investing and safeguarding data, so the IT stuff, make sure we're secure there. And then provide funding for mandated items, which we seem to continue to get more and more. But as I shared the other day, it really has been a pretty difficult budget year. For us, there was a lot of really justifiable requests and needs that were asked. But the ongoing expenses that we'll show you later, just we could not sustain them. So. There's, you'll see a lot of those unfunded decision cards today, and that was so that we could provide. Some sense of fiscal confidence in future years. Trying to preserve that this year. So now I'll go through a few of our departments that will pass it around. Please ask questions as we go. And we'll have that that time on. So first is the executive department. I can see not, not many, not much of a change there from estimated actuals to to twenty twenty six. Budgets did have a slight decrease in the other services charges. As we had a self-waste contract this year. So also the personnel budget, pretty much really similar look there, not much of a of a change happening there. There was a reduction in advertising costs between twenty five and twenty six and increased other services and charges. So decision cards for those from the executive department. Two that I funded was a platform for managing contracts and a platform for managing commissions. These, you'll see they do have some ongoing costs. It's not a lot. But they reduce staff time heavily. And so it just seemed to make some sense to do that as staff is feeling pretty maxed out. So that should help there. The unfunded one is on the communications and marketing. And I think Carla's probably needed that halftime position for a couple of years. As you know, Carla's been here for a long time and every year we ask more from her. Now, we really do promote more, tell our story more, do more. Well, we're, we're at that point to where if we want to do more in our communications and marketing, we need someone else. But like I mentioned, I did not fund that position. Now, half of that. Was in, in the swim, was approved in the swim rate study that council approved the other night. So swim will hire a part-time person, and this decision card was tied with that. Where we'd hire a part-time person to help Carla. But, but we did not fund it just because of the ongoing expense. There may be some wiggle room with the swim person. We may be able to squeeze in a couple hours here and there to help Carla with some stuff. But, but that's, that's where it's at right now. And again, if you have any questions about these, let me know as, as we go. So in personnel, I did not fund any. The one that was submitted. Was for a full-time position in our community care program. You all met Carrie a few council meetings ago when Darren came and presented. She's really wonderful. She used to work for RMP. And now she's been working for us ten hours a week. She has a couple other contracts that she does that for as well. But we only funded her to the end of this year. And so something I'd like to talk to council about. Because she really is great and it's really helping level up the service that we're providing in our community care program. So the thought was we have to bring her on to keep her at the current range she's at of ten hours a week. Will cost just over twenty four thousand dollars next year. So we are receiving just about sixteen thousand, just over sixteen from opioid abatement. Settlements that we've been part of. And then we do have that pot of money from House Bill fifteen ninety. That, that we just saved and put in a, in a fund until we started using those. But because it's one time, we haven't wanted to use that for ongoing expenses. But we could pull just over eight thousand dollars out of that fund. To fund Carrie and keep her on for the ten hours per week next year. So do you have any questions on that or thoughts?
Yeah, so. In the current budget, she's not funded.
Right.
Even for ten hours.
Right.
So she's just not there.
We, we would end our contract with her this year.
And she was the reason that RMP was so successful for us in the beginning because she worked for them.
Yes.
And then when she left, it kind of went down and then we hired her, which helped.
Yeah, yeah. RMP does still great work, even though she's not there, but she was, she's exceptional.
Yeah, she's the one that really drove it and. So, okay, so. It's not in there. Go ahead.
So this is kind of considered a decision card as written down.
It's, it's not funded. There's no decision card. This is something, you know, as I'm. Casey and I are in constant contact the last couple of weeks, just finding ways. So we have the opioid abatement funds. We don't have any plan on how to spend those. That would cover most of it and we'd need to pull eight thousand out of that one-time pot of funds that we have fifteen ninety.
How much is that in there?
Seven hundred pounds.
Oh.
On the opioid funds, the sixteen thousand, that's all we've received here to date.
Yeah.
I get maybe fifteen hundred a year or something. So.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be.
That's not an angle.
Ongoing, no.
Yeah, that's why this would just be to fund her through next year.
And then we can reassess next year.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Yeah. So how much again?
So.
For her for ten hours, how much is that for?
Twenty four thousand five hundred.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
And we've assessed and he can't absorb what she's doing. I mean, I'm kind of curious about this fourth day.
Yeah.
Get the full-time position and, and why that's not something he's doing. I kind of thought that's what.
He is doing. So, so they're, they're doing it together and they're both handling different cases or aspects of a case. So he could do it without her. He was for the first year and a half or two years. It just won't be as much coverage. Right? So, so it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean the work will stop. Just not as much.
How many contacts are they making in a week with people?
Good question.
Because I, and I'm just, from what I see in our emails, it doesn't seem like a crazy amount and I'm.
Oh, yeah.
Begging for naivety here.
Yeah. Leave them for me. So don't, don't use that as a gauge of how many contacts they have. You're, you're getting a very limited update on the amount of contacts. Those are the ones that we actually have.
Successful or something.
Or, or some kind of dialogue with. Most, most of, most of them, I'm not sharing because it's. They push back, they don't want any help and we have to please them, you know, that's, that's most.
Okay. Well, it just, you know, it might be good in the future just to know that, you know, because sometimes even the misses, it's good to know the amount of work that you're putting in. So. So it doesn't hurt to hear those too.
Absolutely.
See the under value.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Yeah.
Regan, thank you. So can you recap if her current cost is twenty four K a year, right, at the ten hours? We've got eight thousand we can pull from HB fifteen ninety.
Yes.
And then the opioid abatement, we have sixteen hundred here today. Thank you. Big difference.
So that would cover her through the end of next year.
So would she consider working with us for only ten hours a week?
I, I think so. At this point, she has a contract with us, a contract with Maple Valley, and I think one other place. She would love to be full-time with us.
Right. It's hard to survive on.
Well, it's no benefits and all that.
You know, yeah.
Okay.
Last question for me. So the downside would be if we don't fund her and she goes away and it's just Darren. Does that have a negative impact on our police force?
I don't know. I mean, so the fact that there's two is really helpful.
Different coverage hours.
Yeah, that, that's a big part of it. And then the second part of it is Darren and Carrie have kind of their different specialties. Carrie's is a lot more into the like recovery navigator section of it. Darren's is a little more like in other areas of housing. Some of the offender programs he knows quite well. So you're just kind of losing some of the specialty. You don't have her. As for us, we're still going to refer over and what happens beyond that's kind of out of our hands. It is really helpful to have someone available. It's like there's a person camping in their car in the, in the. In the parking lot, we can just call them. Less coverage, obviously, but less able we are to do that.
Thank you. It, I mean, it has been said that one person could do one person's job and two people can pull. Two people plus oftentimes and. I just don't, I don't see how we can do without her when this is such a pressing matter and it's not just. I mean, it's. Good for the.
So for something like this, do you want to wait till the end to, or do you want to down now that we want? That we are considering. Casey, what would you prefer?
See, these are restricted funds and they have been reserved, so.
It's not going to change.
It won't make any impact to the, to the forecast basically.
So do we want to make the decision now? Well, we have to make the decision in the days during council.
Yeah, council tells us that okay with this, we'll, we'll have it included in the budget that comes back to.
I'll bring it back on the changes.
And again, I, I think it's important to emphasize that these are restricted funds. They can only be used for this type.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if we don't use it, we'll probably give it away to some organizations.
So is council good with bringing this back to have Carrie stay on for ten hours a week? Okay.
So we'll, we'll move that in the budget. I, I do want to point out. Julie has, has expressed a desire to start including. Possibly Carrie's position. And, and also our RMP contract, our recovery navigator's contract and our AHA contract. In the human services funding. The, the logic behind that is, is they feel like. Those are the, those are the contracts we're funding that are doing the most good for people in Covington. That should be part of, it would be a more sustainable way to fund those. As you recall, right now, the council did a, a three-year term with AHA and RMP that we're pulling out of those. One-time funds we have with fifteen ninety. So those, those go through twenty twenty seven? Yeah. So, so at the end of twenty twenty seven, so next year's budget, we're going to have to decide how are we going to fund these now? Right? And so the thought is, is maybe that's something that should be included in what's submitted to the Human Services Commission. To help fund those contracts.
Because right now we're funding them on two separate platforms.
Well, we're funding them out of our.
We have human services and then we have these other contracts.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, the human services funding is not paying for anything in the community care's programs.
So is this something that we should bring back during our summit to have a further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I actually talked to Julie about that the other day. So that will be. I, I think it depends on council. Do you want that decision to start with council or to come from the commission? Because she's not shared any of that with the commission yet. That's something you could include in it, so.
I would think they would like the visibility. I've seen a disconnect in what's going on in this budget versus their budget, right? It would probably help them have a holistic view of exactly what's going on.
Could we bring it up at like our joint, our first joint workshop with the.
Yeah, I was, of, of course we can. If, if we want to do that, I'd say we don't want to take them by surprise, right?
Right, but for us to talk about together and figure.
So my concern would be if. Like, right now, I have no problem with our commission. But if, so let's say, you know, we increase the human services budget. To pay, help offset these. What if there's a commission then that decides, oh, we're not going to. Fund this at the full amount and they're now going to start funding.
Still our decision though. I mean, they.
Right.
Yes.
And council, like Jennifer, can dictate like, you know, the.
Okay.
This X amount of your funding needs to go towards these contracts. And, and when Julie and I were talking about it, it wasn't in the vein of if human services funding is increased. It just, this is a human services effort. And why not include it in that funding cycle with that? Obviously, council can increase that funding if you choose. But that was how true it is. Okay, so.
I was just saying, we'll have to double check when your joint meeting is versus when that application process starts opening.
Yeah, because the funding cycle, the current funding cycle ends twenty twenty six.
So the joint meeting is the first meeting in November, I believe, with the joint.
Just, how does he, I know exactly.
I have four calendars in my head.
That's impressive. I, I don't know where.
I don't.
But, what's that?
That's right, November twelfth.
So impressive. Yeah, we're talking. We offered that to them, so if they'd like to, they can request it.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll, I'll work with Julie and we'll see how things shake out here. We'll.
So the human services won't have another commission meeting prior to the joint meeting because that was last to be that, that they met. So how, so like you said, you don't want to bring it as a surprise. So how would you work with?
Let, let me work with Julie and Brian, Chandler, the chair, and we'll, you know, may, maybe, maybe. I actually have it on my potential summit items to discuss, so.
Okay.
See if we're.
I have no problem with it. I mean, and obvi, I mean, with what Jennifer said that. It makes sense that we did have a previous. Was it two years ago that you had a meeting where there's disconnect? So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would help with that. And I appreciate their, because they go through. The step in details and bringing to us and they've always done a great job of responding to our.
Yeah.
Questions, why this work versus that work, so.
Okay.
And I think how, how Julie shared it is she feels like several of the contracts we. Fund, although we're doing some good work, aren't necessarily quite the impact in Covington like these contracts are, right? So anyway.
And that makes sense because it'd try to be easier for Julie also if it was all under the human services and that which she's only having to follow the one platform instead of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Counsel against that.
And I think what I saw kind of unanimous also to bring forth that ten-hour position, extend that through.
Yep.
Next year. So we'll have that. Anything else you need on that basis?
So, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just trying to figure. Yeah, so I've got, like I gave you a heads up. I'm, I, for each of these budgets, I've got questions for some of these, but I want to just get. So just so for all of you, I appreciate your grace, but. Since it is such a tough budget season, you know, I kind of gone through. And looked at some of these expenses and just would like to get some further explanation. And some of them just be one sentence, you know, so things like. For professional services, that's what, ten forty one, ten? What does that cover type of thing in professionally? It's, we're, we're an executive now, sorry.
Do you want to just give us a page on it?
Oh, forty. So I've got like four or five on here. It's one of them. It's about halfway down. It's twenty one thousand.
Yeah.
What is that for?
That includes any online codifications of city ordinances.
Online, what was that?
Codifications.
Okay.
If you pass.
Yeah, okay.
That, that survey. It includes also the hosting of our municipal code on the internet. We have a contract with Green River College for a small assistance business program. That's ten thousand. That's a good chunk of it.
We, we, you, we do get, we pay for most of that through a grant, through the port though, so that offsets.
So there's a revenue on the other side. Those are the two big ones. So eight thousand for the online codification and ten thousand for the small business program that's offset by a thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
This is going to grab a word.
I saw, I thought I saw the small business grant listed somewhere else in the budget too. For ten thousand, I'll have to look.
Revenue that comes in to offset it.
Okay. I'm going to keep an eye out for that. So. Travel. Forty three oh one. So we have eleven thousand eight hundred, which is. Actual right now is nine thousand, but. Given that, well. A, a lot of businesses and state government have eliminated travel, just flat out zeroed it out. And so I'd like to hear the rationale for. And I see travel is kind of embedded in a lot of the budgets here. But what is the. Purpose and. For this travel, it has to be critical travel. So, and I see we, it's staying basically the same level throughout. So.
Yeah, so.
Rationale on that.
It's all training, travel to get to training, right? That's, that's what we pay for travel for. So it's AWC, it's ICMA, it's WCMA, it's. Government social media conference, other trainings, workshops, PRSA. It's, there's a hundred dollars for reception staff to go to trainings and workshops. Two hundred dollars per DM for that. Yeah, just all the different, so every position, there's six or seven positions in the executive department. So any. Any travel to any training that they might do.
Out of state.
Local as well.
Oh, look, well, any out of state.
Yeah, it covers that as well.
How many is out of state?
Um, I'll usually have one a year if I go. You have one or two. Krista, yeah, now you're out of state one. So yeah, two or three a year.
Related to that, just to, to, because I, I had that on my list of questions as well. I, I see car allowances sprinkled in every department. And so I was curious. Why we have a car allowance and a travel expense. It seems like a duplicate to me and that the car allowance is like fourteen grand just for that.
So the car allowance is only for directors. So everybody else gets paid per mile. And, and then for directors, the only time we would get any mileage reimbursement is if it's over fifty miles one way.
So is a car allowance, like I noticed in finance, there's twenty four hundred.
Yeah, that's me. So that.
So you just get that every paycheck or is that?
Yeah, what's that they get? Well, I don't know, but yes, I get it.
And what's the rationale for finance?
So that's just anytime I have to travel, whether I'm going to a police meeting or I'm going to some finance training or anything like that. The city just pays me a flat rate and I just use my own vehicle and I don't get reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you, Sean, for letting me.
Yeah, no. And then I did see a listing of the subscriptions too. So for nineteen thousand, how much? Of those, you know, are there any, what, what's the critical need for those as well, I guess? The, the biggest one, over half of it is our next request. That's for public, our public records request portal. One meeting is another, probably the next biggest one. That's seven or eight thousand. That's our council agenda management platform. We've got fifteen hundred in there for social media publications. We've got survey services for two hundred and twenty dollars in there. And, and that makes up all of it.
Yeah, okay.
Can I mention just one thing? Just to kind of remind you how some of the departments work in the general fund. So for executive, legal, personnel and finance. All the other funds, because those are in the general fund, all the other funds pay a portion of those services. So. You're not going to see the offset in here. You'll see it on the revenue side, but this nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy also gets shared with development services, the street funds and the swim fund. So. Kind of helps to bring down.
Pay into it.
But yeah, they pay into it.
Yeah. And then for trainings, how is that different than the travel? Travel's basically. To get to these things and the trainings, that's to pay the.
For the workshop or conference or, yeah.
Okay. And those are all those same? Yeah, same ones. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. There's fourteen different trainings or conferences that covers. If they're all attended to, they're not always, always used. And then just curious on the last one, animal control. Holy, holy, it's going up ten thousand dollars. What do, who are we paying and what do we get?
Counting.
Yeah. And what, what reporting? No, I know it is. I've just asked, what reporting do we get? What are we getting for?
They send us a report every so often.
Our email.
Yeah, I, I have them in the updates too. Sometimes, so. I mean, is that picking up dogs and?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all animal control services.
Wow.
Cats are the highest.
Yeah, it's, it's pricey.
Got a bear.
They did a cow a couple of years ago. Yeah.
I've seen. I had a question about this, the same budget, the voter registration, the, and the pamphlets. When I, you know, was going through an order, I thought, oh, this is because we're putting something on the ballot this year. But then I saw the separate decision cards. So I was wondering if you could explain the, the difference between the decision card and this.
You go ahead, Case.
So the decision card, that's the cost that they'll, they'll charge us for that separate ballot item.
For adding it to the ballot.
These are our annual ongoing, anytime there's a, any kind of election that our citizens get like a pamphlet. Or any election that's up. You'll get the voting.
Gotcha. So this is irregardless.
Yeah, this is our ongoing. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. That was it.
Nope. Okay.
Great. Thanks, Sean. Okay, so now we'll get into council court, legal and central services. So in our council budget here, you can see not much of a change there year over year. One of the items we did want to bring up here that councils asked us to do at this workshop is. We are collecting the House Bill fourteen oh six funds. It's around forty something, forty six thousand a year that we get. And we've been applying it. Are we putting all of that towards By Maple Place?
We have the skip membership that comes.
Yeah, so it's thirty something thousand going to By Maple Place. That we've been doing the last couple of years, but councils asked us to bring that back each year. For you to determine if you want to continue to do that. So we have those funds from fourteen oh six coming in. Would council like those allocated towards By Maple Place?
For the rental assistance.
Yeah.
I guess this is where it's helpful for human services to weigh in on, right? Like at, at a surface level, yes, assuming they're doing what we think we're do, they're doing, but. And we, right, I mean, is that all going?
And they are. We, we follow up on that quite often and they're doing great work. Yeah.
But fourteen oh six, what else can it be explored besides the rental program?
Yeah, the restrictions on that.
Affordable housing things.
Yeah.
Such a low dollar amount that there's not time we could do with it unless we saved it up.
The, the decisions, the decisions in the past have been skip or by maple place.
And because By Maple Place administers that overseas, it going to the city of Covington.
And council authorized several hundred thousand going to skip through fifteen ninety.
I can tell you in the first half of this year, they've helped seventy families and two hundred and twenty individuals in Covington and they're for Covington residents.
And as I recall, and I assume they still do this, they're, you can see that because they're able to provide a report that, that shows exactly each. Each funding, I guess, event that they do that benefits specific.
Yes, they are required by state law to provide some reporting for me anyway to turn over department comments.
Yeah. So question back on fourteen oh six. Does the money that we're getting in from that, that's funding things like the thirty K to find maple place through human services? How, is that thirty K separate than what we're giving them as a? We allot so much.
That, that would be separate. If, if the Human Services Commission decides to fund By, By Maple Place, that's separate than what this funding is. The commission knows about this funding, right? In fact, they, yeah, as of a couple of years ago. So they did reduce their allocation to By Maple Place.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I think we generally ask you every year because their contract expires in December. So Julie also like. I think we generally ask you every year because their contract expires in December, so Julie also likes to kind of have a heads up if she needs to prepare it for the next year.
Okay, thank you, I forgot that we've got those two different streams. So Vine Maple is being funded through two sources from us, okay.
Yeah, for two different platforms. Is council good with continuing the fourteen oh six to go to Vine Maple Place, that portion to go to Vine Maple Place?
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll keep the same, uh, portion that we've been doing, the rest of it goes towards our skip membership. So are we done with?
Uh, yeah, I will eat.
I can't see distance, I won't see close, so.
Need to get them progressive.
Well, these are, but they don't, Costco didn't.
Yeah, did you have a question on municipal court?
Um, no, I want to go back to city council, I'm probably gonna have this again. Bear with me, I'm gonna have comments on most.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, that's right. Um, same thing with travel on this one, thirty-five hundred, again, zero, you know, most states are going, you know, businesses are going down to that, so. Oh, sorry, thirty-two. Um, well, that's, that's the fall of the slides, you know, yeah, I know, I, just, that's one.
I am having awkward times with slides ten comparing it to this, I know, it's.
So, travel, thirty-five hundred, um, year to date, it's only been spent about a thousand. It'll be estimated to be actual fifteen hundred for this year. Um, I want us to look closely at that travel.
A W C conference?
Yeah, so sixty forty-three oh one. Numbers on the side here, uh, down to two, so, just. Okay, I got, it's on the same over here, oh, it's down, so if you go down, it actually lists another page. So, just. Do some thing and some scrutiny on those.
And that's, that's everything from going to an S C A dinner to, to an A W C conference, it's all, all that, yeah.
Yeah, we may not be able to, you know, just think about that.
Does that, that includes also us going down to Olympia in January?
So, why, it's only a thousand this year, yeah, so just.
Well, uh, I know this year we didn't, uh, nobody spent the night at, uh, City Action Days. I think, did anybody even, Jeff was the only one that went to the A W C conference. We just haven't used it, so there might be some wiggle room there.
And then uniforms, which is logo wear, that's these things, right?
Yeah, yeah, like that.
Quit losing them.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, alright, that's it, okay.
And A W C this year, there were two twenty-sixes in Spokane. So it'd be about the same as going to Kentwood.
Uh, okay, so municipal court, uh, you can see there, um, some increases, obviously we're expecting those, we're anticipating seven percent increases in court. Uh, costs, so that's going up unfortunately.
Does that include the, the, uh?
That's prosecution and public defense, yeah. So central services, uh, you can see here, um, not too much changing there, a little decrease. There's a, there was a jump in twenty twenty-five due to estimated actu- actuals on the other services and charges. That was some one-time grant funds received that were offset with, with revenues. And then you can see in our debt service, that's increasing, that's, uh, that covers, uh, it, our lease here at city hall. So that's going up just over thirteen thousand next year. Any questions on central services?
I've got a few questions to central services, um. The carpet for nine thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
That's on page fifty-five.
Yeah, I see, it's, uh, page, yeah, fifty-five, thirty, forty-five oh five. Furnishing replace.
Yeah, so what?
Yeah, what carpet?
Replacing carpet?
That, it's city hall, uh, uh, I think, is it council chambers or just?
It applies to the carpet replacement fund for the full city.
So we put in the same amount every year to eventually buy carpet, or we're buying carpet this year for a specific space?
We pay in each month.
And do we replace it or does the owner?
We, we do.
Nick keeps early payments down. We do our own, uh, updates and stuff in the building.
Okay, so that's part of kind of our rent is the carpet fee.
Yeah, you could say it that way, so we, we have the replacement fund, um, we haven't replaced the carpets for, how long has it been? No, it's been longer than that, it hasn't happened since I've been here.
Yeah, we pulled it out, we put in.
How much do we have in our fund?
Balance, I don't, what, sorry.
It would, I would equate it to like what we do for our vehicles, we put money aside.
It's the same, same point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense.
No, I read it to say, well, we're gonna replace the carpet, that's, so it's kind of a.
Was that a decision card this year?
That was last year, we, we didn't fund it, but.
Not a decision, we pay into replacement.
Then when it becomes time to replace the carpet, we're not hunting for money, we've got to sit in a, fun like we have our parks.
And then, uh, incentives and gives, giveaways, the seven K, so I was curious what that is. Same page is down, um, because I saw on all the different events, like Carlos, I can, I can see it sprinkled throughout the budget. Like, oh, and I saw it in, you know, chief stuff, like giveaways for National Way Out. So I saw all of what comes to mind when I think of incentives and get a. Giveaways highlighted specifically, but this one is a lot of money and I couldn't see what that is.
Uh, that's it, it's all those.
It covers everything. So what you might see in, um, the chief's budget are just specifically for the police department. So this is gonna be for everything across the city, so pens, pencils, notebooks, notepads, lanyards. Everything I get for Covington Day should come out of that budget. Uh, there are supplies for Covington Days that are other line items, not necessarily like logo items. Supplies, yeah.
You know, I'll take a look again, just because I, when I went through everything. That's why this caught my eye, because I was like, well, I've seen this all.
Sometimes we don't spend it all, but there might be a year, like every three years, we have to get a new supply of T-shirts, and that's like eighteen hundred dollars. Or a new supply of mugs, we don't go through it every year, but every couple of years, there's a big purchase, and then that lasts for a couple of years. So that's usually why it's a little higher, but we don't always spend that whole amount.
Recycling grant contract. What in the heck is that?
That is for, oh, go ahead, Rick. So the events like we do at Kentwood, that Public Works does, for recycling, it's with Olympic Resources. So we get, we have to pay for it, but then we get money back to offset it. It's like when we collect mattresses, refrigerators, TVs, all that.
And all of that is offset?
I don't think a hundred percent.
The recycling from, uh.
And then E R fuel, what is that?
Uh, equipment replacement fund, so we have an equipment replacement fund where we.
Oh, it says fuel.
Yeah, where we, um, every time we have a vehicle, they pay into a fund to have replacement dollars put away. They also, that fund also pays for all of the fuel and then charges each department.
Gotcha, okay, that's why I see it everywhere, I saw it in everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay, and then ten thousand dollar park bench, have we rolled that out?
It's offset by the revenue too.
It, it, it's the park bench program, right? Uh, but no, we've not done one yet.
I need to get on that. That's why we brought it forward.
Okay.
Where does Covington Days event fall in? That's central services or that, the actual event?
Mostly parks, I think, yeah. Uh, any other questions on central services? We will go to decision cards there then. So, uh, city council, municipal court, legal services, none, obviously, there's some that city council members have submitted, but they don't come into this fund. Uh, so we'll, um, review those later. Uh, under central services, there was replacement of the conference room chairs, uh, that's a sixteen thousand dollars, that replaces all the chairs that we're on. Right now, um, these are not under warranty anymore and we can't get parts for them anymore. Uh, because we've tried, so, uh, that, that was that, and then.
I'm gonna have to be disruptive, I don't feel good, I'm gonna go to.
Uh, and then the new city website, you might have sticker shock when you saw that fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollar price tag, I did too, and I went to Carla. What is this? Like? Yeah, so, um, uh, you know, it has been, what, ten, a decade or so since we've updated. She has, she has, um, and because there was quite a focus on just one time, uh. Decision cards this year, we funded it, um, but Carla, I'll let you explain kind of the main reason for the accessibility that we need to.
Yes, the main reason is that there's a new federal accessibility law, um, for cities of our size, being a little smaller, we have a little longer, but we have to have it implemented. Um, by April of twenty twenty-seven, so we're definitely gonna have to do it over the course of twenty twenty-six, and that actually applies not only to our website, applies to our social media. Applies to electronic PDFs, um, anything technology-based has to be, um, following the, the federal accessibility guidelines. So it'll be some work, but a lot of the, um, web companies that do government websites, um. Are all over it, so that's why also it's gonna cost a little more as well.
So what does that look to, to the user?
To the user, yeah, so if you are hard of hearing, if you're hard of seeing, if you have, um. Any disabilities that you'll be able to utilize our website, just like somebody who doesn't. So whether that means contrasting colors or, uh, screen readers, um, things that might impact how they view that.
Easier to.
Um, especially like with social media, everything has to have descriptions and alt text, which is, um, if somebody can't see an image. They have to be able to hear from their screen reader what that image is, so we have, I'll have to type in literally a description of every image we post. So that somebody can understand that, so it's a little more time, um.
And I think we have to do it on every document we have on our, every link, every document, every page.
Yeah, so if we didn't get a new website.
Why, once you explain that to me, I understood.
If we, if we had to do it, if we had to like retrofit our website, it would be a nightmare, but.
What's that?
No.
No, no, this is general fund goal.
So, once, once that is all done, the on time, is that three thousand ongoing? To cover, does staff go in there and have to type the alt text every time, or is it serviced or is it included, or is it on?
Both, it depends on what, it depends on what contract we end up going, or what company we go with, some companies will have it where it. A I can read what you're putting in, it'll, it'll calculate, you know, populate that description for you. Um, but you'll always have to have somebody who looks over it, make sure it's accurate. The ongoing cost is just our annual server fee, um, for hosting that website.
Uh, I, I think that.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Is there, is there a way to incorporate, um, probably outthinking, overthinking it? People that may not, um, speak, uh, English.
I mean, I know saying.
And they can translate, it translates everything on their phone.
Yeah, we do have that now, we have, um, just Google Translate is what we have on our website that we like subscribe to, so they can go pick a language. I'm sure it's not a hundred percent great. But it would definitely, that'd be something we put in our R F P, yeah.
That was my question. Um, so back up a little bit, not related to the website, but on the replacement of the chairs, do we have to replace all of them?
Yeah, that's my question.
Uh, no, some of them are still fine, right? We consider them fine, the, the issue is one, having them match. Right, so that, and then, um, as they do, so let's say we just replace half of them. And the other ones start falling apart, but we can't find those exact ones, so it just kind of gets off a rhythm, so just for aesthetics and ease. It made sense to do all of them, then replace half and.
They're just crazy expensive.
It's insane.
And literally, when my office closed, we gave away our very fancy, I mean, I haven't, I have, I took four of them. I, everyone in my family has a crazy.
I think these ones were, are these sixteen years old? Yeah, so these are fifteen, sixteen years old, and these were like seven or eight hundred bucks a pop.
Yeah, how much are they now?
Back then.
There's so many businesses going out, and I know the city, we want it under warranty and all of that, but I, I mean, I'm not kidding, like, it. Sixteen grand.
I like the one that we had in there that I would sit in it with a skull.
I know, I agree, it's.
But not only that, if we only replace part of them, we have parts off of the old chairs.
For our chair technician to do.
It's cheaper to buy a brand new one than trying to refit.
Well, and, and the other thing too, these work for now, right? If, if we, I, I think this, this has been requested for a couple of years and I haven't funded it. So, you know, if it's something council feels like we can get by with, then we don't fund it.
How many shares?
Twenty.
Or sixteen, yeah.
And, uh, this cost for this, or the payment for this decision card comes out of general fund?
Yes, okay.
Anybody else? So, right now it's funded, we'll just leave it at that, we can discuss.
Whatever council is comfortable with, yeah, we, if you want to bring it up at the, um, when we go through the forecast, you can do that. You know, just take sixteen thousand out of what time expenses, but.
We'll just hold it as maybe.
Yeah, okay, cool. I want to excuse Casey, she whispered in her ear, she's like, I just started feeling horrible.
Oh, no.
So she is in her office joining us. Yeah, that's what I.
Michelle is home. Yeah, my girls are home.
And it came on like that?
Yeah.
She doesn't need to stay here.
Casey, doing okay?
She'd probably rather be here than you're home.
Casey, doing okay?
Yeah, no, I'm good, can you hear me?
Yeah, but, but really, like everybody said, do what you need to do for you, yeah?
Um, no, I can't leave you.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, uh, future significant budget issues, um, we've, we've talked about this, but I just. Wanted to reemphasize that the indigent defense standards, as you know, the new limits, um, put forth by the Washington State Supreme Court. Mean that, uh, a public defender can only try up to one hundred and twenty cases, uh, per year. So right now they're at four hundred, and according to our public defenders, they're like, that's fine for us, or public, yeah, but. Anyway, some, some groups, uh, convinced the Supreme Court to, to lower that. Uh, we do have a ten-year timeframe to phase that in, we're supposed to phase in at ten percent per year. And I wanted to put those numbers on there, I didn't put pre-COVID, but pre-COVID, we were prosecuting around two hundred cases a year. And then COVID hit, and then we hit our lowest mark in twenty twenty at eighty-seven. But then you can see we're starting to tick back up from there, so if these, if this standard was implemented a year ago. We would have had to had a second, um, uh, public defender on, on, uh, on the team at this point. So, uh, so you can see those costs, what we're projecting is, uh, in twenty twenty-five, we spent seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars. And by twenty thirty-six, so that ten-year timeframe will be up around eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, in public defense costs.
So. Republic Defense, they're not, pre-COVID, we had higher amounts. King County was prosecuting more. Now they've cut back on what they'll prosecute at one point, if they're not gonna, if we, if Adam breaks.
Yeah.
People in that need to be, that we feel should be prosecuted, but if King County is not even going to look at it. Does the public defender even come in at that point, or do they wait?
No, if, if a case is dismissed, uh, there, there might be a pre-trial thing where, where you might have the, the, um, public defender there. But otherwise.
So that could be another reason why the number's down, because.
Yeah, most of those are in our.
These are all misdemeanor cases, the felony, the felony cases, that standard's even lower.
Yeah.
So I think it's like eighty-seven, I don't remember that number, but, so King County's having to deal with the same problem. And one of the things that they have been doing for years, kicking cases down to district court, which makes them ours, uh, and then we're having to prosecute them. So that's part of why there's been increases in our numbers.
I'm just saying that we could start seeing even a higher spike.
Yes.
Um, as businesses, and then now with some businesses closing, we may have break-ins.
Yeah.
Which would create even more. Which would create even more.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Question, um, we go through the King County port. Have we explored options, are there other ports nearby?
Uh, yeah, there there are, um, I know several years ago, it's probably been five or six, I reached out to Kent. Uh, that was going to cost more and they said, we just don't know if we can take you. Um, I think Black Diamond has a court.
Yeah, and I think Maple Valley is looking to get out of Kent, so there's problems kind of whichever way you go.
Yeah.
Um, that it either costs more or we get a lot less court time or, or whatever.
Is Black Diamond an option?
We don't know yet.
Okay, could we explore that option because? I think it would be cheaper, maybe, uh, what's the ROI on that, right?
I I don't know, they they do a a community court, which is uh, separate from the this, but. That we've talked a little bit about, you know, potentially uh, contracting with them, so we could send some people to those community courts where it's. You know, let's have you, you know, engage in some resources and. And and those are really cool programs, so we have talked about that, but not about. Uh, I think contracting, we would take over their court and and it might make more sense for us to stand up our own. As opposed to contracting with Black Diamond, but.
This may be a conversation, I know that we're not in the police portion yet, but. We're going to have to have a conversation about what's going on.
And and that's something we'll talk about a little bit when we get into the forecast section, is all of our contracts with King County are. Trending unsustainable, um, and so uh, the the inflators we put in when when we get to that is, I think it's six and a half. Percent increase, they've been going up more than that, uh, but we're hoping that'll level out some. Uh, so yeah, that this is a discussion we're going to have to.
I know we did a, had a special commission that did that study all, but it looks different.
Yeah, well, it it does, right, since we implemented the B and O tax in twenty twenty four, we're one point four million dollars more on just our. Con, our police contract.
Yeah, where is Maple Valley going, are they going to King County then, you said they were having? Is this different than us having? I know there's restrictions about us joining and having a district, a policing district, like. Taxing district, like if we join forces to have a community in Maple Valley, one step away from King County.
Yeah.
For uh, policing, is there, are there any restrictions if we tried to get a joint court system with? Like I said, maybe Black Diamond, Maple Valley, it.
We could do.
Is it the same?
We could do that. Yeah, like stand stand one up between.
Stand one up between us, so we're supporting it if it makes sense, then we'd have to figure out how much that costs, yeah, this is doing that. Do we know of anyone else that's doing something like a joint?
Oh, uh, I, I don't know, I'm sure there are some, do you know of any?
I think.
Joint courts?
I was gonna say Auburn and Kent had one a long time ago, but I I know that, I know that Black Diamond and Maple Valley were talking about. Combining their court stuff together, I just don't know if that's.
I don't think it happened.
Um, I think, I think Newcastle provides court service, or maybe the other way around for Mercer Island. So, I think they're they're partnered in that way.
So so curious though about, so are, is a concern with with um, public defense? Or, cause those aren't gonna change regardless.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, so our our court costs are fairly reasonable, they're they're going up, but. I don't know that we're going to get a better deal standing up our own um, court. But again, whether we're our own court or contracting, it doesn't change the public defense standards, yeah.
That's the big cost.
Yeah.
What do you mean, it wouldn't be cheaper, we have Judge Regan right there to take.
Yeah.
We only gotta give him the one paycheck.
Appointed mediator at one point, so I could help mediate. And the chair, chair tech.
Yeah, that's what we need to see, someone walking in for court and the guy's fixing the fixing the chair, steps up to the bench.
Um, any other uh, comments, questions there? So we'll go on to finance, Case, can you control it from there, or do you want me to click for you? Okay.
Well, if you could click for me, that'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, so for finance, um. You see, for salaries and wages, we had a little bit of a decrease from our twenty twenty five budget to our estimated actuals. And that's just due to the timing of the hiring of our new tax analyst, the handles are being out. Um, and then the supplies, the increase that you see from the twenty twenty five budget to estimated actuals, it's just due to, again, the B and O supplies. Kind of getting us all stocked up with envelopes and forms and things like that. And then um, the charges and uh, other charges and services is just the increase in our auditor fees. You can go to the next one, there's, we have no decision cards that we're submitting this year and no future significant budget issues. That is it for me, unless anybody have any questions.
I have a question, um, your wages are going up, that does include the Linda for the B and O tax person?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I answer, thank you. Right.
All right.
Thanks, Casey.
Next budget. Uh, you can see, obviously the increase in our contract uh, with King County, uh, goes from. Uh, six point six million to seven point three million, whilst everything else kind of stays in the same realm. Uh, we did ask for a number of different things, um, one of the things that was funded was security cameras at the police station. Uh, we're gonna look into uh, options on that, uh, we did ask for some upgrades in our facility. Uh, in the bathroom, uh, and any inability to prepare food, uh, we asked for police officers. Um, we also asked for additional flock cameras to uh, cover some of our holes that we've discovered we have, and then um. The last one was overtime budget for uh, working with Darren and Carrie. To do outreach, that we would be able to dedicate an officer on overtime to do that. So those were the ones that we put forward.
Jennifer.
Um, I had a question, I believe the decision card, and I can remember incorrectly or misreading my notes, were partially funded at the police station?
The the camera was, it was a, what was it, twenty or thirty thousand?
Yeah, so the, the quote we got was for like twenty thousand dollars, and that we can find a way to do it a lot cheaper, so.
Okay.
Do you have lighting as well out there? I asked just because I was driving by recently. And and so when I saw the security cameras, I was like, yeah, totally, cause at least when I was driving by, it's, it's really dark, and I. I mean, is there a need for lighting as well?
So one of the, we do have a lighting, like a timed lighting thing.
Floodlight.
Yeah, and it, it sometimes needs to be readjusted, so we just may need to have to have that happen again.
Okay.
And and part of, part of this security system isn't just to have cameras to see what's going on, but it's for the officers to be able to see. Outside the front door, because right now they can't, they can't see that, so. Or or who's, if people are coming in.
Oh, yeah, make complete, and it's, it is like I said, it's, it's dark.
There's a TV set up on the inside there that they're both connected to, so they can.
Okay.
Going off what Jennifer said about how dark, the lights that. The property owner put on the city hall building, where they come on when there's motion. Do we have that at city hall or or at the police station or not?
No, we don't have uh, motion lights, um, I, I don't know if that's really a good. Yeah, like I don't want a police officer to go around the corner having that sucker flick on and they don't want it. Cause sometimes we want it to be dark, uh, and when those things turn on, it's a little startling and then now we're visible, so.
And the officers are in and out of that.
Yeah.
Building twenty four seven.
Yeah, there's always someone there, so I'm not really worried about keeping intruders away as much, which those lights serve that purpose more.
Okay.
Okay. You know best.
Well, hey, it does need some more lighting, I mean, I won't argue with it, it does need some more lighting.
On that, so, uh. For the, we asked for five thousand. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the decision cards now, uh, one fifty three, we asked for five thousand, we're. Or is that the the amount we're gonna get, or that's what we're.
That's what we. Yeah, and I I think we could probably do it cheaper than that, and we will look to do it.
And all. It was, it was thirty thousand requests and we lowered it to five thousand. Okay, and then we got new security cameras, it's in there also for. What's that? We also are getting new security cameras for. At CCP, yeah, for fifty two thousand, so technically about another fifty seven thousand on. Public safety related cameras. Yeah, yeah, you could call it that, it's not in our, the CCP is not, that's a part of the MEC funded thing, but yeah. Yeah. And then um. And, well, we can get to that when we get to Parks and Rec. Yeah, um. Yeah, it's a little staggering to see the budget going up seven hundred thousand dollars additionally to uh. The police. Yeah, so.
But that's as of today, on January, February, we could get it, it'll go up even more.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Is that part of the one point four? How much notice do they generally give us, do they give us like a year ahead?
I think we get about six months.
Oh, yeah.
They usually have a June, July meeting.
Okay.
I had another question, sorry. Go ahead, sorry, um, I saw under the base, I'm trying to find the page now, what page is that?
Sixty eight.
This is why I like the electronic, cause I can just control it my way through it.
Um. Uh, the online, so page sixty eight, police services, the, this is the lion's share of the funds. Uh, I'm glad to see we're deal, still dealing with the police academy, I saw the security for Independence Day, CCP, that was a thing I put forward in the past, how? How was that going?
So we used it the first year.
Yeah.
Uh, and we we found uh, a way to do it for less money, uh, we had two security officers, one on each end, we had no problem. Uh, this last fourth of July, we had uh, double staffing, it was our full staff day, and so we just used them to. Do the parks, so I didn't have to pay for security, um, so just tried to find a way to save a little money, this year we'll we'll dip into it again.
Okay.
Pay for someone to be doing security there.
Is it? So I'm seeing the tagging at Jenkins Creek, you know, and others, is it? I don't, well, it was significant, cause people were partying at that park, I'm glad we did that, but. Is it gonna be necessary to have some type of additional security for maybe our parks at night elsewhere?
So, one of the reasons I requested more officers was to do those kind of uh, like a.
Is that just on fourth of July?
No, I'm just. Right, and that's, that's what, yeah, so the additional officers was to de- dedicate one to do something special like. A a park patrol, uh, where they would go through all of our parks, uh, or to do, like, one of the bigger problems I'm having is evening traffic issues, so like. Evening commute time, so five o'clock, I only have two officers on, uh, if I had a third, I could dedicate one to doing actual. Speed emphasis during that time, I just don't have anybody to do it, you know, um, and I get a lot of complaints about it, so.
Yeah.
But I understand it's very expensive, so.
And it would be great, oh, sorry, Jeff, go ahead, it it would be great to have security in our parks, because, yeah, obviously it's a continuing issue. With with vandalism and and destroying things in restaurants, right? Um, so the hope was, you'll you'll notice uh, decision cards were submitted for cameras at. At the aquatic center, at Jenkins Creek Park and CCP, and we just couldn't fund all of them, we thought, let's do CCPs where we've had the most issues. Let's, let's do a trial, let's see how that goes. Right, right, that's the other point is, that's, that's where my hangup is, okay, so if I wear a hoodie and mask my face. Those cameras aren't gonna do much, other than they can alert in real time our police officers, right, so.
I assume that's why they're so expensive is because.
Yeah, it's a nice system, yeah, yeah. So I'm in theory, no, sorry, it's good, so in theory I support that, I think we'll need to look at that in the future, finding ways, if if it's not. Police officers and maybe park rangers that we have, that, you know, that's their job, you know, that, you know, we have one that patrols those.
I'm just hearing someone asking for a different job title right there.
I guess I wanna be on record that I. Yeah, okay, whatever.
So, if you were, I mean, if we were to fund. Of other police officers.
Yeah.
Is King County even gonna have?
That's exactly.
So, that's a great question.
Yeah, yeah.
You do have free openings, if we added one, we would get to actually add one, so.
We're just still have vacancies. Certain amount of vacancies, right, regardless of how many officers we have. So, why did we choose not to fund them if we could get them? Just because the ongoing costs, um, I'll 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 show you a little bit later, I actually did fund one of the officers and. Uh, Carrie full time, she'd be part time with community cares, part time admin assistance in police. And I funded a few other things and put it all together, and by twenty thirty one, we were eleven million dollars in the red, and so I just. Scratched it all, um, anyway, that's why.
Because even if you fund it now, and we don't get an officer, you still have to put the money into it, then you get the money back, so we're paying for those three officers that are open.
Yeah, and you don't get all of the money back, so there's equipment that they uh, have like cars, so we get to have their car. That that officer's supposed to have, and it sits at our station, it's the same with other equipment that they have.
But there's, so there's a lot of different costs that go into an officer, obviously, you know, but the overhead costs that we pay the county, so for their building. Space, all all that, we don't get that return when uh, when we have a vacant position.
Can I ask this, um, so that we can have an apples to apples, is there any way that we can calculate? What it has cost the city, sorry, what it has cost the city, say in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four, to clean up? Uh, do the cleanups on tagging, on the graffiti, or not the graffiti, but the uh, vandalism at our parks, so we can kind of know. Would it be more effective for us to hire a parking rental? And it doesn't, it does not have to be through the police department, I don't know, so.
No, I mean, Jennifer's doing a lot of that work, right, Jennifer and our maintenance crew.
Like a two point O.
Do that, so.
No, but like someone who would be there and I would want to put Jennifer in that kind of.
Oh, like just. Yeah, great, yeah, exactly.
And maybe they're there for like from ten till nine.
Yeah.
That way they can.
Um, yeah.
Ju- just here, so that we can have, get a pulse on what it's already, cause it's costing us.
Yeah. So, so you're wondering what the cost has been this year to clean up graffiti?
And vandalism, so that's.
I'm putting a rough estimate together, but I I don't want them to spend a lot of time trying to track every time.
No.
No obvious.
But we can rough, we can do something rough like.
Yeah, cause if it's getting close to the.
Yeah.
What a police officer would be, you might as well put money for an officer.
Yeah.
And or.
Oh, right, I was gonna say, I don't think so, but it's security or.
But also, I don't.
Ranger Angel.
Overqualified.
Those conversations in the same vein, I I don't know, so if we hire one new police officer, that doesn't mean we have. Those things are gonna stop, cause there won't be coverage.
I don't think we need a police officer for that, they are overqualified.
Yeah.
So I was in my eye yesterday, I'm sure they did all the police.
Somebody who wants.
But there was an individual who decided to destroy the displays around Starbucks and the deli. Threw everything on the floor and then walked out.
Whoa.
So.
Yeah, so that might just to prevent those kind of.
I I don't remember if they called or not.
I don't think they did, because it was a, just, it happened so quick.
An opportunity.
And then. Somebody started running out and they said this, they told the employee not to run after them.
Sure, well, yeah, well, yeah. It's just.
Oh, Dawn.
Uh, just to keep in mind though, too, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, but obviously, and then I, I know you guys know this, but just for, since we're on this topic is. Obviously, a lot of those costs are just salary that we're already paying our staff and stuff, so you would still have, yes, you're basically losing. Levels of service in in park for that time, but you would have an additional cost for that uh, to cover that. Um, you know, that's not just lost in in wages, basically, of uh, uh, staff cleaning.
Yeah.
So they're they're doing that or doing something else, but we're still paying for it one way or the other, cause most of this labor.
Yeah, I I think what I was thinking you were asking for is, what does it cost to replace the toilet? Yeah, yeah, those too, yeah. Yeah, the supplies to clean up graffiti, so I I wasn't going to include time, or are you wanting that as well?
No, just whatever makes sense, it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It it'll probably be very little then, if it's not including time.
Well, then let's include time, cause that's, they could be doing something else, it's not like it doesn't cost, it is still costing. If it's possible, just, you know, throw a rough number on how many hours, if it's not too much to ask. It it, cause it, it's still costing. So the question about, um, so the two, two police officers that were not funded. I know in the way it was written up, they were to do more of the evening shift and more traffic, but was any of that to help our business community? Uh, I go back to where we made the commitment on the B and O taxes that we would. You kind of know where I'm going with that, right, I mean, so, so two, two questions, have we increased police FTE? At all since we implemented the B and O tax, and then would.
And then would any of this have been to help in the downtown core area?
So I I'd say Detective Ramirez was, uh, you know, I I know he was funded before the B N O tax, but he has been instrumental. In in really helping our businesses, like, just in the last, like, in the last two weeks, we've gotten emails from our retailers, like, hey, we really thank you for. He's he's done a nice job, uh, he's really made the city stand out and that our efforts on retail theft, so. Uh, he's he's done a fantastic job.
Okay, thank you, that just helps us to defend.
And and in this, the the decision card, yes, so we have him, which is great, and what I sent back to Adam. Was that, cause I did, in my original, um, budget, I did fund one of those police officer positions, like I mentioned earlier. And it was to be more downtown business focused, so a little different than what was on the decision card, but.
Um, going back to your comment, that we're required to hold a certain number of vacancies. Can we add one, knowing that we're still going to have these vacancies and therefore actually get one?
Yeah, we we could, we could hire one and have them in nine months.
Yeah, you get him in October, but um, the, so the concern is. Uh, if you then, what, let's say King County starts actually filling their positions, which they said they were going to, but I don't. I work for them, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on that one, uh, they, they're not gonna fill these things quickly, they just got a big bum, they're all excited. And rightfully so, they got a bunch of people to apply, um, but if they start filling them up, then we gotta pay for the whole, the whole freight on it.
What is the, I mean, in my entire time on council, that has never happened, so I hear you, and that's why we we do what we do. But is that the smartest way to approach it? In the benefit of the residents and businesses?
I I mean, I think what we're doing right now with, you know, we're holding our vacancies, we're trying to hold responsible vacancies that aren't. As impactful on residents, right, so we have them on night shift, uh, which. We have less stuff that goes on, so we we are holding them in the best spot, but to kinda, you're saying to add more. And then use the refund we're getting to.
Cause we have gotten the refund for twenty years.
We we have, and it's been, it varies wildly, uh, so. Uh, I think this last year, we did get back nearly as much as we thought we were going to, which.
We try not to count on it too much, the reconciliation.
Because they give it, they give us like five percent back.
How much? Yeah, I mean. Are you saying it's it's not worth entertaining that approach?
So I I don't know if I must, the approach is hire a new officer.
Knowing that we're still gonna be holding those vacancies and that we're gonna be getting the refund.
Yeah, I I think it it doesn't matter how many vacancies we're holding, if we can still grow our department. But we're still going to to have to hold vacancies right now.
Oh, for sure, we're still gonna have to hold them, but we'd still have to hold the same number.
Percentage, so, so.
Oh, number is different than percentage.
So contract cities are supposed to hold around eighty five percent.
Okay, I thought you were saying we still have to have the exact same.
But at some point, the percentage isn't gonna change, you can't have half.
Right, right, so if we added one.
Yeah, all the contracts, eighty eighty five percent.
And this is probably more for, you know, what point do we anticipate the housing to be open? At Lake Point, next year, because they're gonna start building it, but.
They're, they're gonna start probably mid next year. They're estimating, sorry, thank you, they're estimating thirty units a month, and probably a nine month build.
Wow.
So, you know.
End of the year.
See them, I mean, ended to twenty twenty six, you'll see homes going in, now will they be people living in them yet, maybe not? But definitely twenty twenty seven, you'll start to see that. Assuming all things go well.
They're having two hundred and eighty units is what they're bringing approximately.
Right now, in their pipeline with us today, what we have on our books for them, they have six hundred and eight units.
So let's anticipate, let's say these, because.
So I can tell you the number.
Just looking at what happened with K B, how fast those sold.
Yeah, so they're, based on their forecast, what we would have online for at, like, you know, they're getting, pulling the building permit. In twenty twenty six, we're seeing about a hundred and fifty seven units, now these are their numbers, my. Budget, I will just say, is very conservative, I cannot take their numbers at a hundred percent, I give it like an eighty percent, maybe. Um, but let's just use one fifty seven for fun, so that means by. Probably end of twenty twenty six, early to twenty twenty seven, those will be have people living in them. And then at that same time, another a hundred and twenty two are gonna come in, and then a hundred, that's about their average year over year, it's about a hundred and twenty two units.
So where I'm going with that is, so if if we found a way to hire one officer, it'd be October before we'd see him. Which is about the same time that we'd see people moving into the houses.
Houses for sale, for sure.
Houses for sale, Lake Point Boulevard would be open, we'd have a lot more traffic going through Lake Point to get to Highway eighteen. I'm sure Lake Point Boulevard would go before that. So. I I would entertain looking at a way to fund.
I think the real kicker to determine, um, when we look at development and how that's driving public safety increases is commercial development. Uh, right, um, putting in a hundred homes, I don't think that's gonna change much as far as calls for services, but once commercial starts.
That's about two years down the road.
Yeah, and that's, that's the piece that I don't have a marker for yet, right, I I don't, we can estimate or guesstimate based on conversation, but there's nothing. That they've shared.
It's in these two years, I would say, Beth.
So, remind, remind it, remind us again, because part of the development agreement required Lake Point to provide, to provide their own officers. Not to the expense of the city, but I don't remember.
I I think.
If it was for commercials solely, or it was at certain stages and phases, I don't remember what.
I'm not aware that it's a requirement for officers, it's my understanding it's a requirement for space.
For space, and and I thought there was something to help.
I remember.
Yeah, it's been a while, I.
A certain amount of.
Yeah, not the whole time, but.
And and we, I think also, not that this is gonna matter, but much of Lake Point is going to be managed by their H O A. So at some point, Donna and I will be coming back to you and actually having those conversations, but. We've gotten to the point with them around, someone's calling about parking, we're not gonna be responding to that, right? Like you guys wanted these reduced parking requirements, you know, and if that's the case, then we're gonna have a funding structure, you're gonna pay us back. So like, there's certain things that we're still working out in their maintenance agreement, um, around some of those services, now does that absolve them of people not? You know, we're gonna respond regardless, but there is some. Ha ha, I'm trying to just say, like, it's not gonna be like a hundred percent all of us, but but there is gonna be some H O A oversight out there as well.
But I'll look at that police requirement really quick.
Sure. Um, I want to second, yeah, suggestion that we. Consider hiring at least one officer sooner than later.
Yeah.
Um, cause you know, if if. In the perfect world, they get us the one nine months, but. You know, we're also saying that doesn't always happen, so I'd rather be prepared now and get that person in and be ready and hired. By the time those commercial units are starting to go, so I'm.
Many, many years out for any commercial building starts.
I would say at least two years.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I know.
Still puts an officer in the pipeline before that hits, um. So, in this conversation, I guess. Struggling with kinda King County, um, requirements, oh, uh, did you wanna? Yeah, go ahead.
Officer, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I can do that. Um, so they have to do payments to assist a new officer onboarding, um, so there's some hiring and training costs. Um, that are payment equivalent to one officer's training cost will be made to the city at each of the building from an issue in some. Commercial development at six hundred and seventy five thousand square feet, and there's a breakdown, that's like a four payment installment. Um, and then the police department substation, they have to work to put someone on site, and then obviously, we require excepted for all of those.
So I appreciate all this conversation, appreciate everyone's, um, input, and I guess, and my. Are we allocating in this budget all we can to public safety, is that?
Well, what do you mean by all we can?
I'm just.
I I guess I'd have to answer that no, because we could reduce a lot of services and other things that we're doing and put more to in public safety.
So, doesn't that then beg, you know, if we're not, or we should. Why aren't we filling those two police officers now?
It'll set us in the right.
Uh, yeah, that you just, we just said the ongoing cost is preventing us from doing that, so, um. I'm just wondering, we're in one sense saying, we've got enough, we're dealing with what we've got here, but we're also saying, we don't. We don't have enough, so on.
Enough police officers?
Or just, we should be putting more resources at this, but also given that, you know, we don't have the resource to cover it, we're actually okay with where we are.
We could, um, uh, we we would just need to find a way to fund it, um, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars an officer ongoing. So we just need to figure out a way to fund it, um, and that would mean we would have to cut some services and program that we're talking about to do it.
Because we're counting on the refund we're getting for the open positions on it? That's where I'm like struggling, we're getting multiple refunds.
No, so so right now, we we paid the hundred percent complete contract costs.
Yeah.
And then when we do reconciliation, at the end of the, each year, they say, okay, well. You held this many vacancies, so you get this portion of what you paid back, right, so we, so we get that, last year. There was a couple hundred thousand dollars, something like three, three hundred thousand dollars.
Where does that go?
So, if I'm hearing you right, we held three openings last year, they gave us, use it right around three hundred thousand, roughly, so enough for one officer. But they basically took the cost of, they took nine hundred thousand dollars from us for three officers, and gave us enough for one back.
Yeah.
Right, so some of that cost is eaten up in overtime, so, cause I have, I have vacancies that I have to, so, we could change that to reduce the minimum to one. During that time, which would save us money, but then you only have one police officer in the city.
Yeah. But my my, I am all for us adding more officers, I think we should a hundred percent add more officers. Our contract though went up ten percent, uh, over what our estimated actual is versus what we're gonna be paying next year, or if they requested. Another officer will add another two hundred ninety one thousand dollars, so our grand total will be up almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
We're already stretched then, I want another, I want those three that we're supposed to have now, I want those, and I want King County to do better than the Pirates. But, my question is, is if we're gonna, if we're gonna put another million dollars into our police contract. Is there not a way that we can get counted, the county to say, all right, you can have a new officer in four months? Like, because I think, cause like.
Yeah, the terms of our contract with King County says that you have to wait, you have to fund the position for nine months, and then in the tenth month, you get to.
Because that's the amount of time.
But I I completely understand, but it's, there's somebody who just got out of the, gets out of the academy next week, figuratively. Uh, what's to say we, there's a training officer in unincorporated King Al, King County, who's gonna train this guy. Why can't we get somebody from somewhere else who's been, who wants to come to a city in four months, because that training officer can train the guy up?
We do have people that wanna come, that's not, that's not a problem.
If if we weren't required to hold vacancies, coming to.
We'd be full.
That's why they require us to hold vacancies, so that they can spread vacancies out.
Christina, do you have a question?
No, I'm absurd.
So. With this, I know that it's an unfunded decision card for two. Is it possible that we can bring back to potentially hire? Put one, if one officer on, I mean, I know we're gonna have to look at where we're going to come up with those funds.
By bring back, what do you mean?
To council to make a decision to.
Hire another officer.
Yeah, I I would say today's probably the best opportunity to make that decision, um, if we want to do it, cause it it impacts a lot of the budget, so. And we have the time to deliberate on it today.
And, I mean, honest to God, we've all heard it, safety and policing is probably the number one priority from all across the board.
It's the B N O.
Yeah, so does council wish to move forward with adding one police officer?
Well, look at it.
I'd like to put a lot in, right. I'd like to look at it, and I'd love to see the details of what we're putting in and what we get back.
Yeah.
And how much overtime would be mitigated by adding another one?
Let's do, uh, let's do this, so Casey is, was throwing up there often. So I told her to go home, and if she feels okay to jump back on later when I did the forecast.
Okay.
And and we can, we can throw that.
Okay, that's fine, if that's okay.
And if not, that's fine.
We have a council meeting on Tuesday, we can fix, we can.
We have a couple of months.
Okay, so, yeah, let's put that on. To deliberate about that today, adding one officer, I'm sure Adam won't mind if we discuss it. I'm sure our residents and businesses won't mind if we discuss it, I know the thing is. Funding it, so we'll have to figure out what we're going to do, come up with the funding.
Yeah.
So, okay.
At what point do we get the refunds, are they like mid year, end of year? So sometime end of this year, we should be getting around.
I think it's in June, so I think we get the reconciliation notification, yeah, and then, uh, they kind of roll out the next. Budget shortly after that.
Okay, so we've already.
Got our reconciliation.
Yeah, I think our reconciliation for twenty four was two hundred thousand.
Oh, wow.
The year before, it was like three fifty, so, it just, it varies wildly, and it depends on overtime and. All sorts of other, we added body cameras and some other stuff that we paid for, so.
What, remind me again, when do we renegotiate contracts, I mean, how often?
Uh, I don't know what you mean.
I mean, we're a contract city with them, but clearly, they're the ones mandating that we hold things open, instead of just saying. You don't need to hold them open, we're not gonna charge you for it if we're not giving you.
I know, I understand there's over.
Yeah, yeah, so because.
Pass for officer may go up.
If it was like a single source contract between us and them.
Yes.
It would be easier to do that, but because it's a I L A contract, so the the ten and eleven contract cities. Um, no, no, it's it's just an I L A amendment, which hasn't been amended. In a while, we tried to open it up with the county, um, during the Guryan case, because county said, well, we don't think that provision's. Applicable in the I L A, and so we said, well, then, let's change it, uh, and so we're actually in that process. Right now, I've just been put on the, on the I L A committee, uh, to work with the county on that. But as far as like contract negotiations, we're not entering into contract.
Okay, so we're contract city, but since you're local, we might really, more than that.
Yeah.
I mean, it is kind of, can't just for I L A's, I L A's to revisit it on occasion and make sure that every.
Yeah, totally, no, we, we think it, we think it should, there are some provisions where we're, cause once you open up a, a I L A. It opens up everything in I L A, and so we'll see where King County comes back on some of those.
Is there any T A on one of that?
We, I honestly just formed this committee, there's me and two other people last month, so. We're trying to schedule with.
Can we get some scary attorneys on that committee too?
What's that?
Can we get some, can we get some scary attorneys on that committee too, to scare King County a little bit, give us what we want?
There is an attorney shortage.
Do you wanna move on to sign?
Ready? Okay, so, uh, obviously, some significant budget issues, we've talked at length about the contract in King County. Um, uh, we had talked about the increase in officers wrestling evening community issues. Uh, also the two, two officer minimum, uh, continued re- retail and residential growth, uh, which we've already talked about. And then, uh, uh, one issue that we haven't talked about much is the ongoing, uh, security and maintenance, uh, problems that we have at the police station. Uh, there are some things, uh, with us being the alternate emergency operations center, we would probably not be able to fill. A lot of the things that you would get here, uh, over there, which, uh, that's, that's fine for now, but something we wanna consider as we go forward.
Can you, can you explain?
Yep, so if if there were an emergency and this were not available, we would use the police station, and it's just not, this has a lot more. Services that we don't have over there.
Well, those basic necessities make sense, quite honestly, for the officers.
Yeah, right, right, so, I think, that's it for me.
Okay, so before we move on, um, let's take a ten minute break. Uh, I know it's only about nine thirty, we needed, uh, Krista needs some time, do things, so let's do ten minutes. Come back at nine forty. Thank you. Thank you everybody for coming back and thank you Krista for being able to get things taken care of. And so let's move on to community development.
Okay, so for community development, just a reminder that we have two budgets in our department. Um, the first one is for our community development, that is out of the general fund, and our second one is development services. That's an enterprise fund, so as we talk about the community, oh, sorry, hitting my computer. Um, so the comparative budget for the community development fund, this fund funds, um, coast compliance at a hundred percent. It funds my position at about seventy percent. And the other part comes out of development services, and then Daphne, who's our long range planner, she has about twenty percent of her salary that comes out of just funds. The rest of it, of her salaries, um, development services, so she's mostly on it. So at the end of the day, it's about equivalent to two FTEs in this, in this fund. Um, so you'll see here that our salaries and benefits, that's just normal steps and cola increases, you'll see that across all presentations. Um, the other services and charges, those were decreased. The biggest reason for that is because we were able to go get grants for the work that we did last year. So, um, you know, the, the eleven thousand that you see in there for twenty twenty six, that's just our basic consulting. Um, budget mostly, uh, that's a large chunk of it, plus, um, I do have a decision card, which we'll talk about, um, to help. Additional, um, on that, those unfunded mandates, but that larger number came from the grants that we got for climate and. Um, housing, those kind of one-time grants. Um, so development services fund, this basically funds the rest of everybody in the department, planning. Um, permits, building inspections, um, and then like I said, those small portions of Daphne and myself. Sorry, I'm like. We'll go over here, um, and again, those fees are those, about, sorry, salaries and benefits went up. Um, just cause of the cola, and then you'll see that decrease, um. In the other services and charges, so something that's in this budget, um, that makes that number look ginormous. Is the fact that, um, we have, uh, fire impact fees that go into that. So fire impact fees are the one-time fees that are assessed on the building permits. And then when the developer pays that fee, and then we submit those fees back to the fire department. And so it's kind of a, in, in and out, but it does account for about one million dollars. Um, of what you see in there. Um, as far as decision cards go, this year, we're just continuing to ask for our legislative mandate funding. Um, there's about eight mandates that we have to address by June of twenty twenty six of this year, or two thousand, or twenty twenty seven. Of next year that we're gonna be working on. Um, and then a big portion of that legislative mandate funding does go towards our relationship with Mark as a consultant. They do act as an extension of staff for us because I have Daphne as the one time and myself as a working director. Um, and so anytime we can go out and get grants, we're obviously gonna do that, we've been successful each time they've been available. However, Commerce has said that they don't anticipate many grants being available next year, but we still will have these mandates to meet.
What's up?
I can see in the GF and I.
You have, you have a hope. We all have that same hope.
Yeah, that would be lovely, wouldn't it? Um, so as far as future significant budget, it's just, I feel like this is the same year over year for us. Um, obviously, you know, we're a contract, um, department, we have a consultant's dependency. Um, and so obviously meeting that growing demand to meet the demands of the work that we need, so that's not only for our long range planning. But also our current planning, so, um, you know, we've got to process permits, and now we've got to process permits faster. And, um, so we rely on those consultants. Um, the pass through, this is something we've been really working on and fine tuning year over year. Um, the cost of our consultants feel like a very big cost, and a lot of that is already covered by, um, permit fees. Okay, so the idea is that what's going in is going out. Um, and so last year, we, we, we moved to a whole can, um, fully pass through process. We've been billing our developers for that time spent on the consultants. That's working for probably about eighty percent of the development process. Where they're running into some issues right now is in the construction area. So when, when developments go out to construction, they have what's called a performa, so they have an estimation of what it is to get their permits. To build their building, to open their building, go and go on. Because we're building them, billing them for actual costs. That perform a line item for city permits is a really hard thing for them to line item, right? And they have to take those line items to the bank to get those loans. Okay, so it's an unknown, it's an unknown for them, right? So if you think about you're building your home, and the bank's, what are your permits gonna cost? You know, like, I don't know, whatever they bill me, the bank's not gonna like that, right? They want some, some finite, more finite numbers. So something that we are looking at is reevaluating the ability to give them some better finite numbers at construction. But still recoup our costs, right? So we've gotta do some, we'll come back to you in the fee resolution and talk more about that. But that, just know that that's been successful with a little asterisk that we need to continue to fine tune that program. The other thing we're also doing, moving into the next year, is that we've assigned our big contract for engineering its own barco. And so now we will be able to like-for-like better identify that we're actually recouping that very large contract. Um, so that, that's the consultant pass through, and then obviously on the general fund side with long range. We are gonna use grant money to pay for the consultants, um, for that as much as we can, if, if it's available. Um, ongoing legislative mandates, you know, it's the same story as last year, it's just a different category of mandates this year. Um, a lot of those are very much unfunded, um, limited grant availabilities. Uh, my conversations with Commerce early and often is that they don't anticipate any funding available for those requirements. Um, and there is a little bit of money on the table left over from climate before that gets stripped. And so we are gonna be competitively going after some money for that to hopefully offset some of this, but that's not guaranteed. Um, so, kind of the same, same categories for our department each year around consultants, unfunded mandates. And making sure we're fully recouping development pays for development.
Does anybody have any questions in community development for Selena? Thank you, Selena. Gonna move on to public works, Dawn.
Hey, Dawn, I'll control this, I'll control it for you, Dawn.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you for allowing me to be, uh, remote. Uh, we're at my youngest daughter's, uh, welcome weekend at George Fox. And I probably would never, uh, hear it down, uh, or hear the end of it if. We didn't attend that, and we did our other, other kids, so anyway, I do appreciate, uh, the flexibility. Um, I will, uh, leave my camera off, um. Just for, uh, bandwidth issues and stuff, so, uh, thank you, perfect. Um, let me get here. Okay, so, um, similar to what kinda, uh, Selena mentioned, we have, uh, multiple budgets in public works. So in this one is our parts maintenance budget, um, not a lot of changes that you see in there. Uh, basically, uh, the difference is, is just the salaries and benefits, the, just steps. And, uh, cola in that, and then there's just some minor increases in, in all the other categories. Nothing, uh, specific. All right, next. And then. And our street fund, uh, again, you have the, uh, steps and coal in there for the salaries. And, and benefits, uh, on the other services and charges, uh, for the twenty twenty five. Uh, estimated actual. Uh, some of those pieces, we have some increases in streetlights, uh, basically more, more streetlights we're taking over. Uh, and then our landscape maintenance contract, about, uh, fifty thousand dollars, uh, increased in that. That will be reflected going into the twenty twenty six, uh, budget. And then, uh, back to the twenty twenty five estimated actual, it's a couple hundred thousand in there. And that is for some sidewalk panel replacement and some pavement, uh. Repair, uh, so that will be funds that come out of that, um. Uh, pavement preservation funds, actually, so that's covered by, by that, by a transfer, so about two hundred thousand. But that's what that, why the extra, uh, in the twenty twenty five is that we're. We're doing some, uh, panel, sidewalk panel replacements, basically, uh, lifted, uh, panels. And then also some pavement, uh, repair for some, uh, areas that have some significant, uh. Uh, pothole i- issues or alligatoring, so that's, um, that aspect, hold on just a second. And then, um, oh, and then you see the operating transfer out, that's the money that goes to the pavement preservation funding. So, um, that's that, uh, one tenth. Is that right? Uh, so, always, uh, relying on Casey to back me up here. Um, so, next slide. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, quick question, so we, we did the tax increase for street maintenance. But our costs actually are going down. Did, did we, it's not costing us anymore to do improved street maintenance?
So, so a lot of those pieces is the, you'll see that that money will, right now is being set aside. For like pavement preservation and stuff like that, so right now that's being set aside. And we'll have, so you see like two hundred thousand that we're utilizing from that in this. As those projects come online, you'll see projects coming into here into the street budget. We'll actually be spending those, so if we're doing like overlays or something, that'd be some large projects that come in, uh, to cover that. The other pieces, as far as just the, um, it, it was more so just the general fund. Was, uh, having to subsid- subsidy, subsidize the street fund. So those funds were just basically, so the general fund didn't have to, uh, put so much into the street fund to make it whole. So that's, so it wasn't as if, uh, part of that is, is just the fact like it makes general fund, uh, more whole. Um, and not, uh, like, there's a lot more, um, street maintenance occurring.
Thank you, so it reduces the burden on the general fund. Thank you very much.
Okay. Surface water, same thing for salaries and benefits. Um, there's a couple of things that changes a little bit with our, we talked a little bit in our, uh, stormwater the other, the other day, but. Um, so for instance, our filter cartridge replacement is, is only on even years. So that comes back into, it's like twenty seven thousand under supplies, so that's why it's, that's higher in twenty twenty six is. We only do those every other year, so you'll, you'll see it, uh, and those are basically those, um, uh, filter cartridges that are in the vaults. Uh, to basically clean the, uh, the water. Uh, so we, those are every other year, so that's the reason why that increases during that, but it's offset by our, um. Um, gosh. The vault, uh, uh, cleaning and stuff is, uh, the alternate, so, uh, which affects kind of our vector contract. So that's when you get into the other services and charges, um. There was an interfund service increase of about eighty thousand dollars, uh, for that, um, aspect. Uh, and then there was tax and operating assessments that increased by thirty five thousand, and then, um. And then just the vector contract that I mentioned was about twenty seven thousand of that increase. The, the capital outlay is, um, projects are Covington Park. Um, which is, um, sometimes you might have heard of Leaky Hillside, it's back behind, um, um. The, uh, Timber Lane Clubhouse back, the neighborhood back behind there. Where we have a drainage coming across the backside of that, so we are, uh, working on. That drainage is met back behind there, so that's a project that, um, uh, we've got going on with that. Um, and then one seventieth is, um, eh, water quality and one seventieth Little Seuss Creek downfall. That's over by, um, uh, Crystal View Park. So those are two, two projects over there, one is, uh, because there's two areas, one's for the neighborhood. And then one is, uh, closer to our project on two fifty six, so we're cor- correlating those two. So those are what those projects were, and we kinda talked a little bit about those on, um, at our, uh, swim rate study. Questions on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Um, thanks, Dawn, um, I had a question about, uh, I guess in this budget on professional services. It's on page, uh, one seventeen, and then, um, there's a line item for adopted drain program. And then I wanna talk about the street sweeping contract too, so what do we do with the adopt, uh, is that to?
That's part of the, uh, education and, and outreach and stuff too, it's a part of the requirement for, uh. For SWAM, for MPDS, so that's, that's part of that, um, having, that's one way we, we follow. Or, um, comply with that, is having that, that program.
And then the, um, street sweeping contract, it's a hundred and four thousand. Yeah, I mean, I don't put you on the spot, but how do you feel about our service?
Yeah, it's, it's always a challenge, uh, it's better than, you know, it has been, and, um, we do, um. Uh, a lot of those pieces, uh, come into play, I mean, we do a lot of sweeping more in the downtown, uh, as far as our maintenance. The frequency and stuff of that, um, we can obviously increase those levels, particularly in neighborhoods and stuff like that. Obviously, that, that would increase that cost as well, um, we have a, we have a plan, I can't remember off the top of my head of how many times we do that. Uh, a year for like neighborhood type things, I think it's only a couple of times a year that we go through all the neighborhoods. Um, I can obviously get that information to you, uh, but, um, uh. We do then, we'll go out soon as well and have a new, uh, sweeping contract, um, and I say soon, I think it. I'm not sure if it's up in twenty twenty six, or if it's in twenty twenty seven, but I'll, I'll get that to you as well. But, um, but yeah, we have to pretty much stay on them as well, and Jesse does a good job of, of going around and, and checking that. And having them come back out a- at times, uh, if, if it's not meeting that. Uh, but some of it, I think, is frequency and expectations maybe in some of the neighborhoods, and we, we don't have it where it's. Ad hoc, so we can call people out if there's a spill or something like that that we need cleaned up, but, uh, like I said, it's, it's only. Um, a couple or a few times a year that we're catching all of the neighborhoods.
Okay, cause that conforms with my experience, I'm pretty much working from home. All, all the time, and I've seen it once in the last year, so I just wanted to make sure that that. Wasn't coming, like, they're supposed to be going three times, you know, I've, I've seen it once in our neighborhood, so. And for downtown, we feel like it's providing the service we need?
Yeah, yeah, there, um, that one is, um, I'm trying to pull this up as I'm talking. But, um, that one is much more frequent, uh, uh, like, it's more like. I don't think it's weekly. But it might be close to that, if, if I remember right, but I will, I will get that here, uh, for you.
Related to Sean's comments about the contract, um. How often are they going into the, the neighborhoods? Because, a- and this was great for our, um. Make a Difference Day project, that, you know, we were sent into the neighborhood versus the main thoroughfare, which I really appreciate. I collected a lot of trash, um, but definitely something I noticed was those particular streets. Had not been swept in quite, I mean, maybe years, and it, it could be from cars being there. Um, but, I mean, plants were visibly growing. Um, and so I was, yeah, and so I was curious, what is the expectation of the service levels? Within the neighborhood, and is it, and is it the same for every neighborhood?
Yes, it's definitely the same for every neighborhood, um, and literally I cannot, my. I'm surprised things aren't frozen, I'm literally at my computer right now, I can't even, uh, my mouse isn't even working. So I'm just glad that you guys are, uh, can still hear me, cause I'm like, what is going on?
You can get that information to us, you know, like. By next week or so.
Well, and and this is one of those things too. I mean, these are great feedback for us too, because well, we can definitely increase um some of that. Uh frequency and and level of service um with our next contract or whatever that goes out. And uh we can see what what it would be to raise that, you know, we could have that as a say a bid alternate in another contract and say, hey, for another. Twenty thousand, we do this and 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 maybe that makes sense, especially with some of the um. Rates and then some of the pieces that we're trying to do with uh our sweeping contract with our grant with DOE and stuff like that. So. Maybe all of those um. You know, comes into play. I mean, that's that's part of what we're trying to do also with that grant and some of the stuff with DOE is be. Bring that sweeping in-house. Uh and that would raise that level quite a bit uh if we if we did that. So those are kind of the long term plan.
In-house would allow us to at least notify maybe HOAs. So HOAs could spread the word. We can't hit every resident, but. To Sean's point, like I work from home too. I I. Maybe, I mean, in the entire time I've lived in that house, I've probably seen them five times, right? So. Um if I knew they were coming, we'd definitely pull vehicles in.
Right. Uh and we're trying to be better in that regard too. Um uh again, that's pulling teeth a little bit with the contractor on us. Uh on them getting, even though we have provisions like that to provide some of that information. That's been the hardest part. Uh and so that would be another good piece that we we can try to add some more teeth to.
Thanks, Don. I I appreciate that. And maybe. When we get to that point to look at the contract, maybe some prioritization of which neighborhoods need to be hit first uh and maybe. More often, if you know, some of these streets are older. Yeah, yeah, but I'm wondering if we can't. If we can't emphasize certain areas that need it more than others. And because I. Some neighborhoods are brand new and probably aren't seeing as much traffic where others like. It's a timber lane and um those needing like same work attention. So I just want to look at that.
So Don couldn't get the contract open, but I have it open. What was the question? You were just wondering how often they were supposed to be?
Residential.
Residential. So residential sweep all four maintenance zones, November, February, April, and July quarterly. Four times.
That's why we switched vendors also.
Yeah, there's been times in the past where we we've had to get like credits for things because they're not doing the works. I mean, that has happened in the past. We've had. Yeah, there's been some challenges. Uh like I said.
Track that.
Uh there's there. They are uh supposed to be providing that data to us. And like I said, Jesse does drive around. And uh verifies a lot of that. So. Again, those would be uh I can follow through with Jesse and have him provide some little bit of information on that. And we can. With some of the things you questions that you guys ask, I can. Have something sent back out to you guys with a little bit of summary of all of that.
Yeah, I mean, if we're paying for the service, we should get the service on. So.
Just a question, and I'm sure it was while I was trying to find the pages this was answered. Are street sweepers? What about the HOA roads that are not, you know, the public roads? So the HOA, the the HOA is responsible. They take it. I know we don't do think work on sidewalks for HOAs. I just wanted to verify.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Don.
Okay, let's see if I can move this. So now we're to. A small touchscreen and moving things. Okay. I do apologize. I'm there, but it just taken me a second. Slowly coming back to me. Okay, so. Uh projects on here for uh our C I P, we have eleven uh forty-five, which is our two fifty-six project. Um that's that uh culvert, the one that we got our Public Works Trust Fund uh loan uh recently as well. So. Uh that's exciting. Uh we are in the right of way acquisition process right now. So that's what the estimated costs are for that. Uh for this next year. Uh and then the plan. Uh would be hopefully if everything goes well, again, getting through right away. You never know how long that can take. Uh it only takes one property to slow things down. But if everything goes well. Then the idea would be that the project would probably go out in late twenty twenty six. Um early twenty twenty seven for construction. So that's kind of where that sits on that. Uh ten twenty-nine is our systemic safety uh project. That's the construction for the R R F B, the. Re- uh rectangular rapid flashing beacon crossing on one eightieth just south of uh CCP. That um. And then that's also the radar feedback signs on two fifty-six by one fifty-six. So that is almost uh. Through the design process and everything too. So we plan for that to uh be again early next year. Uh for that project to be done. Um so going out for construction uh early next year. Um eleven twenty-seven, uh that's the one where we saw the fish culvert. Uh we're doing that in the summer of twenty twenty-six now. Um eleven twenty-eight is the next project to the east on five sixteen, one eighty-fifth to one ninety-second. And that has. Uh right away acquisition on that um as well. Uh similar to what uh. The status was for two fifty-six. Questions? Twenty twenty-six uh decision cards. We had that uh Toro outcross uh on there for uh parks maintenance. Uh it's oh. Hundred and eleven thousand the one time and the ongoing cost on there. Uh there is equipment reserve uh. Funding. Um that we have in there. Uh and and the the remaining balance was forty-four thousand. That's coming out of the. Equipment Reserve Fund Balance. So um that's how uh that one was uh funded. Um the neighborhood traffic calming, uh that's setting up some uh funding in the budget, uh just a one time to. Um have some funding there if there if it is a uh, you know, some portable speed bumps or if there, you know. Uh some radar feedback sign or something along those lines that we have some money uh in there to do that. We are um. Spinning that up. Um a lot of it is collecting data and speeds and things along those lines to kind of meet that new uh traffic calming. Uh requirements and stuff. So.
In this decision card, I was curious, uh specific to that radar feedback. Is that different than the one that we currently roll around town? Or is this the same in a second one?
It it could be like another one. Yeah, as far as exactly what that model would be, you could either have the ones that are on a trailer. You can have ones that are. That are mounted onto a sign uh say, and that it could get moved around. Uh there's there's a few different options. Like, we don't have a specific. Like, because it's going to be a like a case by case or site, like if something uh comes up, because we don't have like. This is what we need at this location yet, but we wanted to have some money in the budget to be able to, you know, hey, if it meets these criterias. Uh criteria that we have in the uh neighborhood traffic calming program, we wanted to have some money that we could then go out and implement that. So.
So it would be to potentially lease another kind or buy. I'm just curious if we need a second one. That is ultimately why I'm asking these questions.
Right. And uh we haven't, we haven't said that that's what we need either. Like, uh it's just having some cost of that potential. Like, maybe we it's not a radar feedback sign. It's just a matter of, okay. Based on the situation that we're and the issue that we're dealing with. This is the best opportunity we have or tool that we have. And then those types of things, i- i- when we're doing that, you know, we would definitely put into like an update. This is what we're planning on doing or something like that. Especially since this is kind of a uh quote unquote new uh type thing. So we would, we would want to make sure we communicate all of that. Uh information out.
Cr- Christina has a question also.
I like this, and I think it's a great idea. I'd rather have a lease up. But I know I like it. I I get it.
I mean, given how many people are complaining about speeding.
Um then there's in here is also the security technician contract. That um has uh budgeted or or I should say funded for um uh ten hours or eight hours. Do you have that, Casey? Ten hours?
Ten hours.
Ten hours. Okay, thank you. Um and that's kind of the cybersecurity type thing, just having uh someone coming in. It's just becoming a more heightened type issue. So uh Mason was feeling uh the need for that. And so. Uh that would be basically a contract um uh for that, for someone to come in. And help with that.
Now, let me jump in on that, just to give you a background. The request for Mason was a a full-time person. Uh for that position, I talked to him about uh just hard times. And his concern was it would be really difficult to hire someone part-time for that type of position. So we settled on on providing some funding to hire to contract that that workout.
And they'll be there like every week or just.
Ten hours a week they provide, whether they're here. Thanks, Don.
Yep. Um and then the um uh solid waste uh collective or collection uh contract management. Um I think that's going to actually be um. That'll be in the changes worksheet. I think there uh we talked about it after it was kind of published uh for that and. Having that in that, so at a uh also at a uh reduced amount from what was the request. Uh so that will. That will reflect uh or that's. The plan or whatever for that. And that is covered by some of the uh. Contract admin uh costs that come back from the new contract. Any questions on that? Then. Then unfunded, we have the Public Works Project Manager. Um this this project kind of goes or this person. Um goes to uh. The what we're talking about, the pavement preservation uh project uh or person. And uh really what it comes down to is when we were doing that pavement preservation and having that program uh. And the funding going towards that, what we we tried to do a little bit with uh consultants uh in that regard. And it's uh. It's just been. Difficult to get off the ground to have uh. Maybe the highest and best use of the funds for that. So um. Meaning that. It's easy for a contractor, or I should say a consultant, to kind of say, hey, yeah, just do an overlay on this project. And you're kind of, you know. Throw all the money you have on, say, a project. Whereas my hope is is that we're able to uh say, come up with uh extending that that funding by doing. Uh say chip seals uh with uh overlays and things like that. That could, that money could go a lot further. And so uh the challenge has been that that uh having someone help. Uh or basically oversee all that, because we're having all of this data come in. That are all of our pavement condition. And so we're wanting to make sure that we're prioritizing where that goes. And so. This pride, this this. Uh decision card was half. Whim. For the increases in the in the uh capital and that that was uh funded or was in the rate study. Um and we kind of mentioned that this other half is uh what's not funded. But uh we do, we can talk later in our projections. Uh and some of the forecasts when we get in there, uh we have some. Ways that we could potentially fund that with also helping um with some of, because there's still some shortfalls as far as the general fund. And so we can get into that later. I'm sure it's um making things a lot more complicated than than they are. But I don't know if Casey or if Regan, you guys want to say anything more about that, or we just talk about it.
Quick, Don. Um so like Don said, we we, let's say we put a hundred thousand just to make math easy. Towards this um pavement preservation. Well, that takes a hundred thousand out of. Pavement preservation, right? But we need someone to manage that. So that's been the struggle trying to weigh that balance. This seemed like a really good alternative. Hire a halftime person and swim halftime uh in pavement preservation. I really liked it. Um but we obviously, we we didn't fund it. We have some potential options. And some of the funding, and I I can share this when we get into the forecast a little bit more. Um some of some of these decisions were really hard to make this year, not knowing a couple of things. So. We think B and O might come in another hundred thousand or so above what we projected. Um if the if if we pass an M P D next year, that could offset some costs. At the summit workshop, uh the summit, um we'll talk about um House Bill twenty fifteen. That point one percent uh sales tax for public safety. If we get that, that's another seven hundred thousand that we go to public safety to offset some costs. So there's there's a lot of decisions that I just couldn't make this year until we know the answer to those things that happen. Next year. And and this was one of those. But like Don said, we're, we can talk a little bit more about that when you get to the forecast. Thanks, Don.
Thank you. And the other, the other piece of that, uh we talked about a little bit earlier was that communications and market uh su- support specialist. Um that uh was on here because of the half of the uh the swim, which. Was then in that uh funding that we had for the rate study. So. And then this this next piece, um I don't always hate to even say anything in this regards, because it's like, we did all. It's it's so good that we have the TBD and the the extra uh sales tax and stuff going in there. But. You know, and and Regan mentioned a little bit of it with the general fund and and some of that. But the cost provides services are outpassing. Are outpacing those uh those uh revenue projections. But again, a whole lot better. Uh position than what we were, if you remember some of my uh s- um significant budget issues when it came to particularly streets in the past. In a lot better position than we were um in the past, but projecting out, obviously, uh there's still some of those. Shortfalls, but um but yeah, that's the only one I have as far as that goes.
Well, that Don actually made a good point. Some of the decisions council made the last few years, not knowing. What these increases were going to take, like one point four billion in our public safety and our transportation increases. Had we not adopted the B and O, the TBD, we would absolutely be in the red right now off the fiscal cliff. So.
Well, you guys warned us.
Yeah, you made the decision. So.
No, that's great. Yeah, you kept us informed. All right. Anything else, Don?
Uh that's it.
Does council have any questions for Don and? Public Works? All right. Thank you, Don. Ethan.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Uh can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Hi, everyone. Um thanks for letting me attend remotely as well. I'm on the recovery end of things. So. But uh this works better for me and you probably don't want me there. So. Um yeah, so jumping in, okay, we've got three divisions and Parks and Recreation. I think you're all aware. They each have their own budget. We'll start with aquatics. Let me skip forward to my notes. Uh for the aquatics, uh twenty twenty-six budget, really, there's there's not much changes to the salaries and budgets that aren't related to regular step increases. And the cola. Um and then the other categories are just seeing minor increases, uh nothing really substantial. Um and then if we move on to the Recreation and Cultural Arts Division budget. There are again.
Do you want questions for each division or wait till you're all done?
Uh either way, it's fine.
Okay, uh Sean has a question on the.
Aquatics, yeah. Thank you, Ethan. Appreciate it. Sorry you couldn't be with us. Um. Under Program Supplies on page eighty-four. There's a listing for miscellaneous activity, equipment and supplies. And then another one's for special event, equipment and supplies. You explained. You explain kind of what those are.
Sure. I would say it's the special event, equipment and supplies would probably be more targeted towards their anything like a floated movie, any kind of one-time program that they would call kind of a special event at the Aquatic Center. Um, and then the the miscellaneous equipment and supplies. I'm looking. I'm thinking that has to do with just regular ongoing program supplies. So think if they need to replace kickboards or water exercise equipment, things like that.
Okay. And then I had another question. Um similar on page eighty-seven, there's a expense for program supplies and then meeting expenses. Are program supplies then more like paper and pencils and things like that? Or is that similar?
Can you give me the line item number? Because I don't think my page numbers match.
Page number eighty-seven, it's uh, I don't know how much of the number you need. Uh, five, seven, six, twenty, thirty-one dash ten. Twenty dash thirty-one dash ten.
I I can tell you, I've got this here. So it's the American Red Cross class equipment supplies, Covington Days giveaways, Covington Days supplies, Dash and Splash supplies.
Okay.
Miscellaneous activity, equipment, supplies for all the other activities you do, ready, set, play, and then special event equipment supplies.
Okay.
Okay, so can I ask my clarifier here to Carla? This is why I have a question too.
No, Aquatics has their own booth at Covington Days and they have their own specific aquatics parks giveaways that aren't generic city, which is where ours is in Central Services, which covers the whole city. Yeah.
Okay.
And then meeting expenses just below that, same one?
Yeah, so that's um, there's a full-time staff meeting for three hundred sixty dollars. There's some meeting expenses for two hundred fifty dollars and then part-time staff meetings and six hundred.
Okay.
Thanks, Regan.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ethan.
Okay. Uh, moving on with Recreation and Cultural Arts. Again, there's really no changes to the the budget or the salaries and benefits other than um regular step increases and COLA. Uh, and again, with this, there's no real big changes with the supplies or services, uh just small increases.
We have questions on this one also, Ethan.
Hey, Ethan, appreciate it. Um, so again, for everyone here at page eighty-nine, and then it'd be line item. Uh, five.
If you just give me the last four, Sean, I can.
Last four, thirty-one dash oh-five. And then I'm going to talk about forty-one dash ten as well. So those are all of our events right now. And in supplies, it looks like.
Yeah.
And funding them, it's a hundred and uh or a hundred and almost a hundred fifty thousand, hundred and forty thousand.
The line you just gave me is thirty-six thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, that's for supplies. And then, I'm sorry, I said also forty-one dash ten.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, and so that's the actual what it costs for us to run it. Yeah, so.
Well, those, those are going to be contracted services. Professional services would be contracted services for those events.
Okay. One, and I know you probably won't have it right here. Uh, for these events, do we keep track of attendance? And do we have any idea of which way those rates are going? Can we see that?
Yeah, we do track attendance. We we can provide that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, that's one of the things we talked about in last year's budget workshop and why we eliminated um some of the concerts in the park and the daytime family because their attendance were a hundred to two hundred lower than the other events.
Yeah. So I'd like to see how that's going.
I do, I want to make sure we we get it. I I do send out in weekly updates, usually with each event, what our projections were. Are you wanting every event the last year?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We put something like that together, Ethan?
Yeah, you're looking for just events or programs as well?
Um, well, at least these events, I don't, how is that different than programs? Programs are.
Programs are like.
They operate at the aquatic centers.
With the ad hunt being an event or program? Yeah, it's a program.
I. I'll just, I think for these right now, just these um in whatever this budget is.
I I I think I have something pretty, that would be perfect for you. It was a uh update that we gave the commission not long ago. I can forward that on to Regan.
And then on that same line item, professional services, it uh says miscellaneous. What is that used for?
Uh, the four thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Uh, it it would be used for miscellaneous, you know, uh professional services we need through the year. So.
We plug it to a lot of these different funds to in case one of those goes over.
Okay. And then the la- uh the recreation guide, we've budget fifteen thousand, is that what we do pretty much every year? And how many do we print? And how many extras do we have?
Yeah, I'm just catching up to where that's at. Can you help me with that?
We've printed seventeen thousand?
Yeah.
And do we have any at the end of the year? Or could we print more? Could we print less?
Do you want, do you want me to answer, Ethan?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we do three times a year. So the next one coming up will be winter, spring. We print a little over seventeen thousand goes to all Covington Addresses. And I think we have fifteen hundred overprint that we bring to events and have at the front desk. Um, and that's been pretty consistent last five years or so.
Okay. And then finally, I do see the concerts in the park are back. I saw, yeah, summer concert for four thousand. So.
That's just one.
That just pays for one, huh? Okay. There's, huh, may one. Okay.
Is that without a sponsorship?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just what the total cost would be.
So the one concert.
So that's the same that we would have had in the budget last year, too.
Yes.
All right.
Debbie?
Um, I was gonna ask, where would the cost for like the pop-up events were? Would they be in this part of the budget?
Right here.
Where? What line?
Thirty-one oh-five. And it's on page ninety. It's about the fourth line item. Yeah, there were two hundred and fifty bucks. It's cheap.
It's mostly staff time for those.
Good. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Um, I had a question about the tree lights and ornaments. Do we have to buy those every year? Fifty-four hundred?
I think there's um some replacement that has to go on. And I think there's a fair bit of um kind of uh supplemental equipment, like there's timers, there's lock boxes, there's things that get tampered with that they'll have to replace. So yeah, there's usually a little bit of needing to resupply that that each year.
Okay, yeah, it surprised me that just for the lights, not the event. The event's a whole different expense that that it's fifty-four hundred.
So I will say some of these line items, it it's, I can understand. It's easy to to look to, you know, what's this or? But the answer is no. Some of these line items, we actually don't use it.
Oh, for sure. It's a budget asked it.
Yeah.
If you mind.
Yeah, yeah. And so we've needed that in the past. We may not need it this year, right? And so if it's not needed, it just gets absorbed.
Yeah, I would think though you would reduce it if you assume that it's rolled over.
How much did you say that was, Jennifer?
It's five thousand four hundred. The last four digits are thirty-five dash zero.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Yeah, um.
It just surprises me because it's in addition to the event itself. That's, that means that event as a whole is is costing.
Yeah, that's something that I can look back at and follow up for you. In fact, I can.
Under the lights, does that also include the rental of the boom truck? Is that expensive?
This is under minor equipment, so probably not.
It could.
There's twenty-seven hundred for professional services.
Because when I signed the, when we do the billing summary, that was a pretty hefty bill to pay for that boom truck.
Which, which Ethan, is this or what's the line item?
It's for the purple item.
Thirty-five, zero, zero, small tools, minor equipment.
Now, there's there's a separate, there's a separate expenditure for the tree lighting, equipment rental.
Okay.
Um.
That's right.
Yeah. I will check on that, Jennifer, and get and and let Regan know.
Yeah, that would be great.
I can speak a little bit to that uh in that we, you know, there there, as Ethan was saying, like, we get um you know, people clip some, we've had some where people have cut the lights, so we've had to purchase them. It just just depends. And so sometimes we don't know, obviously, hey, if we get through, there's been years where, hey, we got through, we didn't, we don't have to order anything. And and the next time, you know, people cut a whole bunch of them and we're.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
So to replace the whole scenario was fifty-four hundred, right? Is that, that's the worst case scenario? We had to replace all the?
Uh, I don't, I, we would have to get back on that too. I don't remember what the numbers are. I don't think it's all of it, no.
I have one more question.
Oh, equipment running.
Um, and this is probably real simple. Forty-two oh-nine says advertising legal notices, peach jar advertising. Those are, that's a, is that a news? Is that not a jar? These aren't peach jars. What?
No, it's a, it's a electronic, uh, I guess, email system that Kent School District uses. So
Yeah.
We can send flyers.
I get two, three a week.
Yeah.
We started doing that a few years ago.
Yeah, we get, we get a couple um of free ones through them that we could use. But any of our events that generate money, you have to pay for, and you can't just bring flyers to schools anymore. You have to use this program.
Okay, that's fine.
Anybody else? Debbie?
So what are we being charged the BNO tax for? What? Except for the?
Oh.
Center. So this is forty-four oh-five.
Yeah, we pay the state BNO tax.
Oh, wow.
Or? Which part of our organization?
Yeah, they they would be for our parks and Casey knows, Casey can explain.
Um, so Ethan is correct. We paid the state of Washington, um, our BNO on our um rec and aquatics programs. They qualify as a type of service that we have to pay that on.
Because we get revenue for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, go ahead, Ethan.
Sure. Okay. Uh, so the next one's just parks. This is Parks Administration and Planning and Development, Development. There again is really no change to the salaries and wages um and benefits other than step increases and COLAs. For the twenty twenty-six budget, there again are only minor increases for supplies and services. I will say, looking at the twenty twenty-five estimated actuals for supplies, there is a bump of almost twenty thousand. And that is related to costs associated with the Karma Statue Program. Uh, and that'll largely be offset with the Arts Fund and future program revenues uh for that program. Any questions on on the Parks budget?
I have one, and I apologize. It's just one budget back. I was just reviewing my notes to make sure or I remembered everything. Um, events at Town Center in the forty-one ten for six K. What is that? Because again, this is me seeing what I think everything is called out. And this seems like just like a duplicate.
The events at Town Center, the six thousand?
Yeah. Professional services.
Yeah, that would be for um Carla, help me out if you can think of any of our contracted services we use.
Yeah, I know. If it includes like the porta potty services and any of the extras.
Called out elsewhere.
Yeah.
They're for other events too. So like, there's porta potties for Covington Days or porta potties for the, um, you know. So I don't know if that's specific to Town.
Yeah.
Typically, this would be like if we had like a sound engineer or had to rent a generator, things like that. It may, it may not get used for each event, but it's there. So like if because I know when we we did these Town Center event decision cards, we didn't know what the exact events would be. And so I don't know if we've been using that.
Did Fall Fest have its own line item? Fall Fest was a new town. Did Fall Fest have its own line item? I know that was a new Town Center event this year.
No, that would be under Town Center.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it would be Fall Fest, drive-in movies. Anything at the Town Center site that we do.
Like me. We shouldn't be paying for that.
Yeah, we do sponsorship in kind for that.
I can find out, though, and follow up.
It, that'd be awesome, just next.
I just don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's totally fine. Thank you.
Yep.
Now I can't.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Ethan. Oh, Casey?
Uh, I was just gonna mention for the Fall Fest, um, what we've spent so far this year was about twenty-five hundred dollars on just some face painting, a petting zoo, and some entertainment, actually close to about three thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Those type of things, too.
Yeah, that too.
All right.
Okay. And was there, were there any question on the Parks Division budget?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the Park CIP budget, we just have uh three CIP uh lines. We have eighteen oh-nine, which is used for public art. That twelve thousand two hundred fifty dollars is just a transfer out to the Recreation and Cultural Arts Division budget, uh, which covers the Covington Days Art Program and Artist. Um, and also that part of it was transferred out to the Parks uh budget for rotating art and vinyl wraps for utility boxes. And then uh CIP ten fourteen is for Jenkins Creek Park. Uh, that project is largely um anticipated to be wrapped up this year. We're still doing a couple punch list items. But there, while that large construction contract will be closed out this year, there are a couple other kind of general project related items that we need to complete for a grant, including installing an interpretive sign. And we might be looking at making a a couple modifications to that ramp up to the bridge. And so that's what that twenty-five thousand dollars is for. Um, the CIP three thousand and eight is Jenkins Creek Trail. And um, I think you guys just got a big update on that a month or so ago. Uh, and that's the phase one design and construction anticipated for next year. Any questions on the CIP budgets?
Debbie?
So capital improvement dollars, are they restricted in some way? Like, could we potentially pull money from a project? And say we want to use that towards a police officer?
Depends on how it's being funded. So like, let's say one of these is funded out of our, for example, our town centers are that's, those are general fund dollars that are unrestricted. So yes, we could do it with that. If it's funded with something different, maybe TIB, then we wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Do we know specifically for um Jenkins Creek Trail of that spending?
The majority of it is funded through uh grants and then dedicated Park CIP dollars. But I'd have to probably have Casey go back and look and see if we've allocated any general fund dollars at all.
And and to keep in mind that that these would be one-time kind of expenses. So it's hard to say, let's, let's take it from that and fund an ongoing expense.
Okay. Thank you. That was an unpopular comment, too, I'm sure, but.
No, it's fair comment.
Everything's fair. But anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Ethan.
Okay, uh, next is the decision card slide. So here we have a, for the funded ones, we have forming a Metropolitan Park District. I think that was mentioned earlier. This is the for fifty thousand dollars um to put that measure on the ballot if the council so chooses. Uh, the next one is a community room uh for community room shades. We had this on uh potential decision card list for the last couple of years. Um, they're just getting banged up. And this is to replace the blinds with shades in the community room. The next one is for security cameras at Covington Community Park. Um, I know that uh cameras have already been discussed somewhat. And I think like Regan said, um, you know, we submitted three, three different decision cards. Uh, and Adams submitted one too. For security cameras. And I think from a parks perspective, we kind of landed on, let's just do a pilot kind of um installment and use of these and see how it, see how it works, see if we can actually make some impact. And is it useful? Um, and then we can make decisions on whether to uh expand that pilot project or not. Um, so that's what that is. That focuses on at Covington Community Park. This was actually a revised decision card. But the first one was more money and was covering more area at the park. Um, including the entryways. This one will just really cover the area around the restrooms, which tends to be the high area of vandalism and kind of activity like that. Um, the next one is the Pool Liner and Family Changing Rooms Project. Um, I think you're all aware of this. We've received a uh three-quarter of a million dollar grant from King County to Three quarter of a million dollar grant from King County to uh replace the pool liner, install family changing rooms. Um, and uh. Will need to put in city funds for this, although we've requested, I think in our legislative priorities, a request from the state for some some additional funds, but. Um, the amount that we need for next year in twenty twenty six would be seventy four thousand dollars of city funds. America two fiftieth celebration, um, that is kind of a an event. Type uh decision card. America's turning two hundred and fifty next year. Um, different communities are doing different things. Uh, this decision card was written to do, I think, three different options, and I think this funds all three. Um, one is to kind of carry the theme into our current events. Um, another was to do, uh, I think a student speech contest and some sort of. Um, event in conjunction with the National Cemetery. And I'm spacing on what the third option was, but um.
Ethan, and let me mention something there. So. The state has actually organized a committee to work with with jurisdictions to do something. Uh, next year. They're not so concerned what we do, but just that everybody's doing something. So I met with with the leader of that group a few months ago and. And then um pass it on to Ethan and and Jackie. So really. Um, we don't even need to do any of the things on that decision card, but if you fund it at a certain amount, we can do something. Next year, right? My hope was that it'd be cool to do a drone show, but it's just too expensive. So anyway, that's kind of what that decision card is, so.
I thought you said drum show.
Yeah, and the the third thing I I was trying to think I was a day of different day of service uh type of event. So.
I think they're gonna be for a decent one, uh, around twenty thousand would be a minimum.
I would have said fifty.
Yeah, I probably should have.
I was going to say that. I know that we have these decision cards. I did reach out to Reagan Dunn. And asked him. Cause he's looking for suggestions for the budget. So I asked for a hundred and thirty five thousand for security cameras, which would be for Jenkins Creek. Coming to Community Park and the Aquatic Center. I asked for twenty thousand dollars for a potential drone show for the America two fifty. And then I also asked for ten thousand for the FIFA watch party food truck. And an additional twenty five thousand for the storehouse now. Ask big and settle for half. So. Or if we get anything, but if you don't ask for anything, the answer is no, no. So um. I was just putting that in there.
I I like all of. I like all of the funded. I think, and I'm I'm, yeah, I'm the. With all of those, particularly the community room shade. I appreciate that. It's the lower version, not the automated, cause that just can. Cause of a lot of problems when you have stuff, parts going bad. So thank you. I I mean, I think for the Americas two fifty also. Um. Uh, we, our Rotary Club met with the the Maple Valley Historical Society. For one of our outings and. Kerry Collins is part of that and he was also excited at the thought, and of course, he's one individual. Not speaking for the city of what if we did a something regional like between Maple Valley, Black Diamond and. And Covington, so there might be. You know, an opportunity to expand the reach of that funding.
And and I think that was what I wanted to give the across. We don't need to do those things. We'll come up with something and and share with council. I want to talk about the FIFA one. We thought that would be a fun to try to incorporate something. With that, with the World Cup happening. Um, but it was just like to watch one game. That's that was the cost. And so um, I had an idea that I shared with Ethan and Jackie. What if we did like a FIFA food truck rally? And a FIFA fans pickup games, right? It's cheap for us. Uh, we can't use FIFA.
Right.
We can't use that. So we'd have to say, you know, soccer, whatever. But Jackie and Ethan and I met, um, Jackie's gonna talk to Sean about it. So maybe there's something we could do. That will, you know, will cost us very little, but.
Would that come out of the current, Rick? I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, would that come out of the current recreation?
Uh, it it would, it would be something we'd have to. We're talking a few hundred bucks, five hundred bucks probably, you know, it wouldn't be a huge expense for us to do that, so.
Try to get some sponsors, maybe.
Yeah.
So I I just wanted to throw something out. Uh, we, uh, many of us heard over the summer. Um, that our. Residents were disappointed that we didn't have more concerts and okay, cut back. And we kind of. Pulled a few people, we'll, we're gonna look at that, but um, I got costs from. Regan at fifty three hundred dollars per concert. I see that we've got one budgeted for four. Um. I might ask if we could entertain, yet there are. Any things that we've um funded on decision cards that Reagan Dunn can. Help. Could we? We come back and revisit doing maybe two more concerts, but there one is funded. Um. Or roll a concert into one of these events like the. The uh World FIFA Cup, if we should do that and the Americas tune for fiftieth birthday. Do a theme concert around that, but. You know. We heard, I think all of us said that we heard from people on National Night Out in other events throughout the summer that. People were just disappointed that we didn't do concerts and. I felt like we bailed them. It it was a budget this decision and we and we explained that to people. But. I feel like we should try to.
That is expensive though for a couple hours, like a two hour event. You know, but that's. That's it. There's no other activities happening.
With the three hundred.
Yeah.
But I didn't ask for like the detail of those costs, like how much of that is the performer? Cause I know at least one performer that said he would do his. At his own cost if he could just do one, so. Yeah, I think we've heard of two that said they would do. Without charging them for their cost. So then it's the, I know that the the. Sound system uh tag is.
Yeah.
And then staff, it's kind of staff.
I think if we have people willing to perform for free, we should make it happen.
Yeah.
Well, I and we did hear that it was a bit clunky when they tried doing that before and they were shut down and it was not a good experience for them. So that might be something. They were trying to say, hey, I'll play for free and they were like, ah, ah. So I I know, it's been a few years, I think, but that was one of those that. We want to make sure that if if we're okay with moving forward on something like that, we'll figure out how to make it easy to accept people who are.
Performers are good. Yeah, I mean, that's the thing you want. So we'll need some demo tapes to.
I would, I would say that's something we can for sure discuss. If you have the names of them and send them to me, we can. You know, reach out and see.
So.
I I really like the idea. Maybe that's what our two fifty celebration is. Maybe it's a big.
Yeah.
Concert, we play, you know, much Bruce Springsteen.
But something, yeah, Bruce Springsteen, that's fine. I mean, and they, I mean, talking about like the diversity of of events that we offer, like. We don't have kids. I don't have any kids that I'm gonna bring to any of them kids movies or anything, and that's fine, cause you need something. But adults or like aging population love to sit and listen to music, so. You know, fits that role.
Sean.
So a lot of it was just said, I I love, I love that idea of rolling another concert into. This uh America two fifty and. You know, we're gonna do the day of service anyway. Um, and so maybe we just rebrand the one we're already doing and and take that three thousand. That we were gonna spend on our day of service. And put that toward it.
Yeah, that's true.
Fourth of July concert, so I would support and we come to debate this. That there's money in this that we could use for another concert, so.
How did our day of service end up at three thousand?
Well, we were gonna make a specific one for this.
No, this is, this is on the decision.
I do notice they have been recycled and are showing up here today, so good job.
So that. I would make that friendly amendment and just say, I think all this. I think it's good and waiting to hear what the county is gonna say, but. Yeah, I think we can roll that concert in and and remove the day of service.
So so uh reduce the America two fifty decision card to four thousand.
No, just keep it at seven, but just make the. Option C, cause isn't it each one of these is a thousand for the themes? For theme of America two fifty, whatever that is. And then student speech is three thousand, so we want that. And we want a concert for three thousand. So seven thousand. And but instead of service, the day of service, it's a concert.
Can I mention one thing that? From from the staff's perspective, a concert costs more than three thousand dollars unless you guys are gonna do the recruiting of talent.
Yeah.
So. I just want to be clear that.
So.
You can't get a concert for three thousand.
For the sound person, it's twelve hundred. Yeah, I I don't know for sure what we're spending on the performers. Yeah, so if we could get that.
Staff time.
Performer is gonna be the one that has to squeeze. We get a performer for whatever the budget is that we have.
Yes.
I know what we got.
Yeah, which is can be challenging. I'm just saying sometimes our expectations need to be open a lot different.
I think, I think maybe what Ethan's suggesting as well is. Um, so we can eliminate. That, but um if we want to do more than one two fifty event, maybe we need to increase that card if one of those items is a concert.
Or we adjust the student speech. I mean, how much does that cost? I mean, make that two thousand if we have, if we're giving um.
So let's do this. We'll do a America two fifty concert. And then whatever we have left on top of that, we'll incorporate. Maybe it's the speech, maybe it's something into other events.
That works.
Debbie, America two fifty concert.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this sound engineer like? Uh, certified with the city? Or what qualities? So so it's a licensed, like bonded, sound engineer? I'm gonna look, I know. I mean, for twelve hundred dollars. Um, but I'll keep my. I'm in the music industry. I'm just, I just. I just, I need to know the parameters. I mean.
Are you looking for a part time hustle?
I need to be bonded. Yeah, I'll say.
Since we're in the area of. These are really great to have and they build community, but it isn't building streets or policing. It's like. When you grew up in a small town, everybody volunteered, everybody pulled together and it's harder sometimes to do that when your city's bigger. But there might be opportunities where we can do that and still provide an experience and people have ownership in. Their events in their community because, hey, look, I helped do that and I helped, you know, and it just. I I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to do something, cause. We want these things and the community wants these things, but we're looking at. Other competing resources.
And I know we're not, we don't, we're not gonna. Um. Be super themed about. That thing or Jennifer's. But I would be willing to sing the national anthem one time during that event. I mean, if we can't do it two fifty, no.
That's one bill I'm okay saying, nah, we don't gotta pay that one.
I'll put in a decision card.
So if I could just uh kind of state where where I think council's at, we're going to fund this decision card at the full seven thousand. The priority is a concert. And then if we have additional money on top that, we could organize that speech contest or incorporate some other celebrations into our.
Well, and I like the idea of rebranding already one of the councils, cause we have two council service projects. Love the idea of this. Sean said a rebranding, one of those two fifty, that's. I think easy, right? I know, sorry, yeah. Is there a way to do it at the cemetery? Like maybe day of service at the cemetery? I don't know. I mean, it's not really within our city, I think, in the basket.
Anybody else? All right. Did you need to do the unfunded?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't do the park project signs or the unfunded, but I don't need to.
Okay. Go on to the next item.
Okay. Uh, that, uh, we're, oh, future significant. Budget issues. These aren't anything that you guys aren't already aware of, but um obviously, you know, big costs uh come with capital improvements. Um, you know. Looking ahead, looking uh at the city's vision, there's the idea of a new aquatic and rec center and. Park system growth that matches the growth of the city, including Covington Community Park, Jenkins Creek Park, Founders Park, Jenkins Creek Trail. They all have phases. Um. That could be built out. Uh, and then some of the, some of the system that has been built out uh is just aging. So there's kind of upkeep and replacement of those. Systems over time is something to keep in mind. Um, other than that, just also just kind of keeping care of what we have as best as we can, uh, supporting park maintenance and that kind of thing. That's it.
Any other questions for Ethan? All right, thank you, Ethan.
Sure, thank you.
Move on. One's decision card.
Yeah, I know.
Just do we wanna take a break or we wanna go into the next item?
We could do, we could do Sean's and Jennifer's decision cards and then.
Do lunch.
Kind of I can do forecast.
Okay. All right. Good shot.
Okay, appreciate it. Um, so I'm gonna talk about the Pride Event Decision Card. Um. It's on page one eighty three. When there were two options there, so um. Appreciate this opportunity. Um, and uh, I guess to start and be honest, I'm. Surprised at the amount of response we've gotten for this event. Um. Um. But I will say this, I'm grateful. The that the community is engaged in this and it illustrates, I think, um. Opportunities for us to stretch um and uh. Consider different opinions. Um. However, in from some of the feedback, it appears to me there's some confusion about what's being proposed in this. And so I'm gonna take some time here to kind of go over what's being considered and envisioned. Uh, and address some of the concerns, so. Um, Pride Event. In Covington would mirror a city sponsored, city sponsored gatherings our community is familiar with. Uh, a day for neighbors to connect, families to picnic together, uh, for music, for food trucks, for guests and guest speakers. Just as nearby towns such as Maple Valley and Kent host inclusive community festivals, Covington's event. Would offer similar opportunities. Most importantly, it would provide members of the LGBTQ community a visible and positive space. To learn about local nonprofits and community partners and to connect with critical resources and services. Strengthening the the safety, support and cohesion of the whole community. So that's what's envisioned for this. Um, there's some feedback about a parade and other things. That's not what's envisioned. So I want to put that fear to rest. We're not talking about uh any event walking downtown, uh downtown. It would look. For all intents and purposes, exactly the same as all of our other community sponsored events. So. Some of the feedback we've heard. Most notably, I'm kind of gonna go in order of what I think is priority. We've heard that. With limited city funds uh or limited city funds should be allocated to high priorities such as public safety. I wholeheartedly agree that the city's most. Um, must focus limited resources on core priorities like public safety, roads and public services. In fact. The Covington Pride Event would support public safety. I think that's a key. Message to get through this, isn't an either or. Um, members of the LGBTQ community are disproportionately victims of crime. For example, I just looked on the FBI data. Website shows that twenty five, twenty one percent of all hate crimes. Are focused on non gender or on gender nonconforming people. And they represent roughly nine percent of that of our community. Um. And what's worse is those. Trends are going upward. Um, we don't know exactly what is causing that, but it is going upward. So. By hosting a community wide event that connects people with resources and builds social trust, we help reduce. Isolation that we're hearing in this community. Strengthens neighborhood bonds and therefore contributes to a safer environment for all residents. So this isn't an either or. We're not taking funds from critical public safety issues. We're actually augmenting and. From critical public safety issues, we're actually augmenting and and focusing on an area where we may not be doing enough for public safety. And another thing. A number of these people aren't gonna talk about in a minute are are feeling isolated and we're hearing about bullying and intimidation, um, threats. You know, violence, those, those are going up. Um, if we focus on helping them feel safer. It helps us as well. Because if people feel empowered and emboldened to be able to bully and threaten them. Just because they're different, each one of us in this room is different and there's an attribute to us, each of us. That we could be threatened with. We need to send a message, however, that that's not acceptable. There isn't a segment of our community that we would allow that to happen. So. I reject the idea this this isn't about public safety. So, number one. Something Covington should promote events that include all in our family focus. Absolutely, that's what we're doing. Being a city-sponsored event means that it's open to everyone. A city-sponsored Pride Event in Covington um, would welcome all residents and their families at the same time. Experience from our town's own human service data collection project, remember we did that? Tells us there is a reported sense of isolation and invisibility among our LGBT community. A sense that they are less visible in our community's life. By hosting an event. With an explicit opportunity for connection, we help address that gap. Our town's families come in many forms. Your nuclear family, single parent households, foster homes and LGBTQ households among them. Covington already spent uh, sponsors many family-friendly events. Such as Kids Fest, superhero socials, movie nights, holidays, which serve the predominant family structures. A pride event would simply expand. Our calendar to reach families and households that have historically had fewer city-sponsored options. So this is checked again, but this is not a family-oriented event. It is. Uh, three, I wish I didn't even have to address this, but it says the event supports deviant behavior. Uh, this concerned or deserved a really thoughtful response. So first. Neighboring cities like Maple Valley and Kent have had pride events for years without incident. Our own experience in Covington last year, the private pride event. Worked with law enforcement and planning. And produced a smooth and incident-free event. Second, a properly planned pride event is not about promoting behavior. But rather a celebration of belonging in community, belonging, community engagement and connection to resources. All under the same citywide sponsored safeguards and standards would apply for this event. Little to no possibility of this turning into a deviant behavior type event. And again, I'm. I'm disgusted that I even have to address that. Fourth, city-sponsored event. Uh, how would we say yes to one group and no to another? You know, it's a fair question. With any proposed event, the council considers them pretty much on a case-by-case basis. We use typical criteria such as that. Um, such is what I'm gonna say here to decide whether we'll support it or not. Things like, is it legal? Can we actually legally sponsor this? There are things we are not allowed to spend our money on. So that right there would end that discussion. Two, does the event align with the city's vision, mission and values? Three, we also look at their resident support for this event. The Covington Pride Event is to be evaluated under these same conditions. It's not about giving special status to anyone. But about making sure we sponsor events that sponsor or support community, uphold civic values. And offer benefits to our residents. So. Oh, and then one last thing I also saw real quickly, some comments about. Sponsoring this event would create division in our city? Um, I think the opposite is true. It's. Revealing that there's already division in our city about this. It's not like it's gonna create anything new. People are saying. They would like this event. And then we've got people saying they don't want this event. So it's not gonna create anything new and by not funding it, doesn't make that division go away. It's still there. So again, I reject that argument as well. So in short, hosting a pride event in Covington is about promoting a community, about community safety. Connection and inclusion. It's about ensuring all residents feel part of the town's life. And that our city's public sponsored events reflect the full breadth of our community. Working with residents, city staff, partner organizations and law enforcement, we can ensure. The the event is safe, inclusive, fiscally responsible and consistent with the value of our community. Um. And and consistent with the values of community service and belonging. And I guess in the end, um, in the decision card, there's a couple of. Options, there's one for a uh. Uh, option two, which is a city-sponsored lead uh, for ten thousand. That was, you know, not the intent of this. We were looking more at option one where we'd have uh. Funding that we would then partner with an outside organization to actually promote this. So. Um, I wanna take the option two off the table right there. So. I guess I'll stop there. I have some ideas on how to go forward with this. Are we gonna debate these afterward or do we need to get consensus now on this one?
How do you wanna do it?
Now's the good time to.
First thing I want to do, Gus, is that the Maple Valley one is not run by the city. It's run by a private organization as most of these events, not just pride, but most events. Across, whether it's pride or anything else, are run by private organizations.
I could speak to that a little bit too, um, because cities are doing some things. I, and Ethan could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think. Almost all the cities except maybe Tukwila, the, what the city does is a flag raise. Um, all the, all the actual events are done by private, uh, other, other groups. I. I printed out the list, but it printed too small, so I can't exactly read it. But that's what, that's what Ethan sent me and that's why.
Use the magnifying glass on your uh, phone, you know?
Yeah.
That's pretty much right, Regan. It seems like uh, cities that do flag raisings, um. You know, sometimes publicize that, make a social media post out of it, but it it tends to be a pretty small. Uh, scaled back type event for the larger, you know, events with entertainment and booths and. Things like that, the cities are are largely partnering with um, uh. Uh, at least one other um, partner, if not multiple other partners to be the lead organizers.
Jennifer.
Uh, I went to the the Pride Event in June and I was really curious, you know, to find out from people there. Why, why, or do you think it's important that it's city-sponsored? Because there was a lot of like, well, Maple Valley is 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 inclusive and accepting, but Covington isn't. And I was. Like hearing that nonstop, right? So. Like what's the difference? Like, to me, you know, what is the difference?
Thought Maple Valley was sponsored.
Almost. And I would, I would, I would say that they were sponsoring it based on what I saw and based on my conversations. With.
I talked to their city manager yesterday because I was going through this list that Ethan gave me. And she said, um, they put a booth at the farmer's market. And but the only thing they paid for was some swag to give out.
So I think it's that 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 the city was behind it, that the. I'm not saying all the funding. I guess. What I was getting at is why do you, why is it important to see Covington?
Yeah.
Right? And what I heard was so that I'm recognized, that I'm included, that I'm not actually excluded.
Yeah.
And I I don't, I don't even think it comes down to money. It's just seeing that, oh. I am part of Covington. I am included in Covington. And I uh, ran into a family I knew many years ago from preschool. And was like, oh, hey, blah, blah, blah. And they were telling me how great it was to have something like this close to them. In Covington. She said her oldest wanted to come and. Thank goodness she doesn't have to go all the way into Seattle and try to figure out that whole situation. She could come to Covington and have access to all of these organizations. Right there for her kid. And I thought. This is magical. This is exactly what we're trying to build here is a place where everyone is included, access to services. It it was, it was perfect. I mean, it really, the event, it. Felt like kids fest because it's in that same venue and the way that the things were set up, it it really did. And there was face painting and there were bracelets and. Um, it really was just, you know, when I was there with the Girl Scout troop and they were making buttons and. It just, it had, and there was cotton candy. And I mean, it really, it was a fun event and. Performers, there were a couple of people that sang and it's great. Fully, 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 fully recommend that the city in some way. Partner, get behind, support any visible way for our community.
I would, I would, I would echo exactly what, what, what Jennifer's saying. I know that, and well, and Sean too, I mean, we. I don't even wanna go there because I'm, I'm gonna put that story aside, but there are people that legitimately have. Issues either coming out to their family. I mean, I'm, and. They don't necessarily feel like. They can speak for themselves because. They might be ostracized by their church or their family members or their. And. Just without, I mean, I, like I said, option two, I, that wasn't, I don't think that's the intent. The intent is also say. We support this event. We believe it's important for our community. And whether it's some small, like promoting it on Facebook or something like that, sets that tone that. It's, it's okay. And when I was talking with one of the council members, um. In Maple Valley. You know, we were talking about some of the concerns, because some of these events have gone sideways, like to to not be very family-friendly, right? And she said, we were very specific about what was gonna be allowed and what wasn't gonna be allowed and they had control over. The type of event that it was going to be and the intent of how it was going to get the fostering of the community and. Family-friendly and it's just a way for people to connect. And if people don't wanna go, they don't have to go. Because I don't go to most stuff just because it doesn't, I mean, I'll go because I wanna see how the other half lives. I wanna be able to connect and see what they're doing, but it isn't. It's not something that, like I said. And and what if, what, I mean, we have single family, you know, single parent households, they're not doing daddy-daughter. There's no daddy in the household, God bless them, you know? How do, how do we, I mean, so everything has a place and this is just one small sliver of a bigger community pie. And it would be great if, if we can, I I I believe. You know, as as more of a moderate in government, our role is to hit the basics and provide that platform. To make it easily accessible for groups that are promoting. Our values and our mission to, to um. To, to help provide that kind of environment. I mean, Purple Light Night is the same thing. I mean, and and maybe we do have a platform or a a very strict, you know, um. Criteria that we would use just in case there's other groups that are gonna, because we do have to be fair, right? You don't wanna set ourselves up for.
I used to suggest something like we did with the Pride Event this year where we gave them the space, we waived all their fees, but include promotion.
Possibly, I mean, that's a huge relief for, I mean.
It wasn't shared that way, unfortunately.
Right, because it was our first one, right? So I mean, it takes time for everybody to get used to what it is and not what people are afraid it might be and or what it could.
And I think, I think what was, uh, you know, part, and not that there was an issue, but part of the the perception of an issue was. You know, people organizing have no idea what they're doing, right? And so a true community sponsorship, partnership, collaboration. Would just kind of open the doors versus feeling like you're hitting a closed door every time you go to fill out a form, you know, like, oh, God, I didn't know that was six hundred and fifty dollars. Oh, I didn't know I had to research this. I didn't know I had food handlers, you know, all of those things. And so it just feels like. Even though that's not the attempt, we have rules, right? But the the perception is, why do I, why are all these things? Well, because you're trying to plan an event like a month and a half. But if the the city is involved, it's like, hey, guys, you need to do all of this and we'll help you through. That's, that's, that's different.
Debbie.
So I'll. I'll share my feelings on this, um, are somewhat different. I, I believe as our role as government is to. Offer the services that our community needs to everyone. So if we're doing things like. Resource fairs. And we're doing Covington days where everyone's invited. I guess I struggle with understanding why there may be a community that doesn't feel welcome at Covington Days. But I'll, I just wanna talk a little bit about another group of, of our residents, of. Subset of our residents that may feel somewhat the same. And these would be people that suffer from food insecurity. They are also bullied. And they are also the victims of crime because they are generally of lower income and live in in a lower income housing. While we have, we have a nonprofit that takes care of them. The city doesn't do anything specifically for people of food insecurity, although we do. Provide funds through through a grant, but we don't have a special day of recognition or.
Yeah, let her finish.
Okay, um. Also with our veterans, we do a a celebration of our veterans once a year with the Rotary Funds that event. We do ask the city to partner with us, so only to the extent that I think we advertise on Facebook. The city doesn't provide any funding, um, but that's another subset of our population. When I first looked at the, the recommendation, I thought, well. This is, if we're going to give. Funding for an event, it is for a subset of our community. Is that fair to all of the other subsets that we don't provide a, a, a day celebration like? Like the veterans. Um, my, my comment about the, the food insecure was more to Sean's point on. Where it relates to public safety. So. Yes, we do fund Mayor's Day of Concern. We, we provide. City doesn't really provide the funding. We provide the, the labor for that as volunteers. Um. I don't feel comfortable that it's the government's role to provide a funded event or a subset. Of our residents.
Is it this microphone? There's a microphone here. That's. Incredible. Um, yeah, first off, um. I pride myself on the fact that this council. Does such an extraordinary job supporting those values. Which we've done for years. They include all and they are for all. And we do a really good job of fulfilling our role as. Um, not government employees, but as representatives of the city. Who trusted us and elected us to do what we do and what we do incredibly well. And I would say that we've done it incredibly well. Uh, at least my time on the council. What doesn't? What doesn't sit well with me is that something, th- this isn't a subject of policy. This isn't a subject of. O- other things within our community, but it is a very sensitive topic that. Is already. To your point, Sean, creating divisiveness. And my question would be, why would we highlight the divisiveness of this? With that, I will say. I am no stranger to feeling like an outcast. To feeling different when you come to a different country and you can't speak a word of English and you are bullied. Because of that. And this was before diversity was even welcome. I also had the opportunity to either live in that and feelings are like the wind. And I could give wind to my feelings and fuel them. And allow them to take over my life. Or I could have taken a step back. Looked at what it was I was feeling and said, no, I am. Normal, I am respectable, I am. Accepted and honestly, I don't know of a more accepted community and celebrated community. Than the LGBTQ community. I, I know that not everybody's going to agree with me, but. But it's very, I, I don't under, maybe I am naive, but I, there was a couple of emails that said something about marginalized and oppressed. We live in the freest country in the freest time of all history. I have never seen oppression within our city. To really any group, but especially, well, to, to any group. And for, for me to. Say, yes, we should fund something that is based on. Well, I mean, truthfully, what somebody feels like that they're not accepted. I, I would encourage that person to look around and say, hey, I am accepted. I am accepted in every public space. In every public event. Our church welcomes everyone, including. I mean, everyone. It is the most. Again, in history, it is the time where everyone is accepted more, it, it, we live in the most diverse time. We do, we do. I believe people have the option to make that choice for themselves though, and. What I also do believe is that government should stick to government. We, we do it and we do it best and we will cause diversity both within our council and within our community. I do not encourage that. I don't, I don't want that. I want everyone to feel accepted. I, I'm, I'm really sad. It really saddened me that you said something about. Um, events that are for structured families, but not for, who said that? Who, who, who said that? I would say movies, come to movies. I mean, we've all volunteered to movies. We see every subset of our. Of our community, every subset, and I love, oh, if there's one thing you won't. Be able to point a finger at me and say, it's that I don't love people and that I don't love all people because I do, I do, I do. And it pains me that there's a group that feels. Like they're not welcome because I believe they're welcome. They're welcome where I am, they're welcome in my space. I will love on them just like I would anyone else, but to allocate and to celebrate a. A specific group because they don't feel like they're accepted. I'm, I'm sorry, we have to be above that. We're, we're in a time where we have to be above that. We're good, we're, we live not, and I will even go even further, not only in the freest time, in the freest country, but in one of the most liberal states. On the most liberal side of the mountains. There's no place that they're welcomed more than here. And. I want them to feel that. I do, but I don't believe that this is the job of the government and. Our council and, you know, people live in Covington. Because they choose to live in Covington and we do things the way we do in Covington and I don't know that we need to change in. To everybody's feelings because I can tell you fir- first and foremost, there are refugees that have a feeling that we can't. Fulfill. There are groups like African American. Groups that also feel segregated. I, I would say racism is higher than. Marginalism. Perhaps, but every group has the right to feel the way they feel, but we have. A job and a trust from our community to do what we do as well and we cannot. We, we just cannot appease everyone. That's not, I'm sorry, that's not the government's job and I want to hug. I would, I really would. But in my humble opinion, we do what we do so well and I think we should stick to it. This is why we're so successful and we're excellent. I love inclusivity, I do. We have seen, we have seen what the people think about this event and it's. I, I don't, I don't want to highlight division. I don't. I want to highlight inclusivity, but. Let's do something that can be actually for all, they are family events. Every, everything that, every event that we put on is a family, single. Anyone and everyone can come to them and not feel like they are not part of the community. Ever, people can come to this event, but they will feel like they're not part of that community and, and that's okay, but they're just not going to come and so it's not for all. I love you all, but those are, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Christina, Joe.
All right, I'm, uh, I'm gonna take feeling out of this and I'm gonna talk numbers. And this is, because this is what we're talking about, we're talking numbers, we're talking about a budget, let's, let's. Let's take our feelings out of this for a minute. How much does it cost for us to promote something on Facebook? How, how, how much does it cost you to make a, a post on Facebook? Your time, so.
Free.
Free. Hey, when we have her work on lunch, when we have her work on lunch, that is a hundred percent true.
It's millions of dollars.
So, so. Your time, so roughly one post, it takes you, for something like that, maybe take you an hour, fifteen minutes, okay? Um, okay, so your time, we'll figure that. How much were, how much are our fees for when they put in an application for something, for anything to use the park?
Was it?
Based on when you do it, so it's like two hundred to five hundred, something like that, based on timing of your application.
For a special use permit.
Special use permit and then staff time, how, how long does it take staff to process a permit like this?
Touches every department, so my department, Ethan's department.
That's included in that fee, okay. How much was, that's what, there was a lot of fundraising that went on. Do we know how much was fundraised?
For this last year?
Yeah.
They got like a thousand bucks.
Thousand bucks. And then I'm sure there were volunteers who volunteered to come out there and do the booth and whatnot and. Okay, so. Okay, and they, they.
Took the trash. I could not believe that they were collecting giant trash bags.
So, so my, they put on an amazing that was a thousand dollars and I'm sure if given. It, I, I don't know how long they were planning for it, but I'm sure given, if they were given more time, they would raise way more money because. Anyone who understands fundraising for events like that knows that people are very willing to help and very willing to do that. So we're talking about right now, if we look at this. They raised a thousand, we'll say it was five hundred bucks was the fees we waived for it and we expedited the permit, well, it was. Was it fifteen, was it fifteen hundred dollars for that grand totals? We had their fundraising plus our, the five hundred dollars we waived. Uh, Carla's four hundred dollar, uh, fifteen minute fee. No, uh.
I, I will say, since you brought Carla into it. She can make a post in fifteen minutes. If she's going to respond and that comments. And this one will generate a lot of comments, right? Um, that takes hours and hours. But I don't know that that's something you need to include.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna include that in my calculations here, so. For a first year event, it was Reagan. I, I, I took my son there who represents as a member of that community. Not gonna lie, he hates going to events, so he hated being there, but I dragged him anyways. And he, he was like, yeah, it was all right. I asked him, would you go again next year? He goes, probably not because I'll be nineteen and you can't drag me places at that time. So that's, that's just him. My other, my other thing is, is that I'm a firm believer that. We. Seattle, which has the largest Pride event in the, in our area. They don't even put it on, they waive fees just like we do. I'm just trying to figure out why we would want to reinvent the wheel when the, the largest Pride event in Western Washington. I don't, is Spokane Pride event about a little smaller than Seattle one? So, my, my, just my one question is, is I'm good with what we did last year. I'm sure there are other things we can do, especially promoting it. I think we can promote the. Heck out of it, sorry, I almost said something, but I think we can address the heck out of it or promote the heck out of it and do, do that. I just have a, and I don't mind if we set up a grant that maybe even the, uh. Oh gosh, our Equity Commission does. I always screw up the lettering. Uh, I was gonna put the, I was gonna put social justice before the culture on that one. Uh, yeah, I was gonna say. If we wanted to set up grant funding that they do, sort of like what Human Services. But it's like, hey, for ev- you, here's, here's a pot of money. That people can apply to that are going to support equity. Cultural ju- art, culture, social justice, they're going to do that in our community. Here's a pot of money. You can't give all of this money to one group though. And then we figure out how they do it.
Unless there's only one applicant.
If there's only one applicant, but even then you don't, you can still say, no, we're not giving you a fund, depending on their application. I don't think we should be. Grant for, this is what this says, grant for another group to lead. I think we just need to scratch for another group to lead, grant put forth by the Equity, Culture and Social Justice Commission. And any group, any group, not just Pride, but any group that comes to us that wants to put on an event that will. Provide a community benefit, will provide equity, culture and social justice. Or any mixture of those would be the better idea than just saying, we're again, only give it to this one group. But then we give it to. To our commission and then we still get a final say and saying, oh, we gave them a thousand dollars because of X. We go, hell, you. I think we give them another two fifty, we can play with it like that, or I think we should take two fifty away because they're not, we, we disagree with you on this, let's have this conversation. But I don't think we should be funding, we should be providing a grant for one group. We don't do that with Human Services, why would we do it with another group? Just my thought. I think it's a better idea, a better use of time because it's also a better way for us to. Branch out in that equity, in that diversity that we so want. That doing just one group is pigeon pulling us.
Were you thinking that full amount or?
I don't have a number in mind, honestly, but I think that is a discussion we could have because. Again, we, I mean, even the grant could even be, hey, we, we won't waive your fees, but this grant can be used towards your fees. Or this grant can be used towards you doing what? As long as it follows the rules that we have set forth that make sure it's not a gifting of public funds for other things.
About the waiver fees, what, what I told Catherine last year, just do some public benefit. I suggested the storehouse, I think they did collections for the kid's school district. I'll waive anybody's fees if they're doing that, right, in the event, so.
I, I just think that that's a better idea, but also think about it this way, we're trying to find two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars right now in this budget for another cop. Do we have the, this might, this sounds like a great idea to create this grant funding. We need two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Granted, this is five thousand, that's not even a, a percentage point. But can we be funding most of our decision cards right now if we're trying to find, you know, three hundred thousand dollars? That's just, that's a question I think we have to think about if we're looking to hire another cop.
Back around, Sean.
No, I appreciate this and, um, I do, uh. I guess that the only thing I'd say and I want to. Find the common ground here and a way for the, the community to feel included and it feels not the right word. You know, that, that don't fixate on that. What, however you, whatever you put around it, they don't feel included in some instances and. Asking them to feel included, that's just not how it works. That's not how it works and. Highlighting, not highlighting, again, I reject it. We're not highlighting the device, it's not going away if we don't. Somehow have this event, it's gonna be there, so. And how do you make divisiveness go away? You don't ignore it, you know, you address it. That's how you make divisiveness go away is to show. That other people are human beings too and have the exact same issues and concerns. By saying just everyone get along, that isn't how it works and, um. Debbie, to your point about, um, uh, uh, you know, do they not feel invited at Covington Days or included? I don't know, I can't speak to everyone's experience, but there aren't. LGBTQ related resources at that event, you know, there aren't. People trained to speak about maybe a young teen's concern about coming out to their parents at that event, so I'm sure they come, I mean. If nine percent's the number, that's like eighteen hundred people in our community and so I would assume, you know, this community goes to these events. But if they're looking for support for issues they're dealing with, I don't think they're finding it as. Easily as they'd like to, um, so, um. I had some ideas about areas where we could cut and probably could, and tune that as I was going through. I mean, I would say. I just, we're looking for money that we were gonna spend anywhere. Let's get rid of our logo wear, thousand bucks, that's it. One thousand dollars and just put that to the event. That would double their current budget, so.
Um, I, I appreciate the, um. All of the feedback from you and all of the comments that are made and interesting idea about funding, giving the ECSJ a pot of money to do, you know? Um, I also, I would say, just based on. Conversations, getting them the money is probably not gonna be the hard part. People, I, there's enough community members that will have private donations to help put that thing on, but. If they want to use the park, like that's, that's our, our realm, right? And if they're providing a community benefit, I mean. Why, why wouldn't we try to help support an event that is providing a community benefit? Whatever name is on it, if we're gonna do that, promoting it and then of course then we have the benefits of the, the nine percent and it's not just. It's not just those individuals, it's their families and so forth, so there's probably a bigger bucket of folks that would receive benefit from this and. Let's try it for a year. We can always go back and say no. If, if things go sideways or we get all sorts of requests that we're like, eh, I don't know how that's gonna work, right? I mean, why wouldn't we take that first step? Or. One and a half steps. We've already done a little bit of it, right? So I just, I, I still feel at the very minimum we need to say, it's okay to have this event in our community. You don't want to go, go, don't. If you want to go, great, here we have it and figure out. How to manage her workload if comments go sideways. I mean, that is a thing. I mean, do we have, we can turn comments off, can't we, or no? We cannot, okay, okay. Oh, well, we can on some of our Facebook groups, so, um, but. I would say maybe, maybe the five is too much, five thousand is too much, but I think there's something that we can do. That would not really cost us any extra money other than shifting a little bit of the, the line item time from some departments.
Selena and I have been talking on Teams, uh, just about this going to the commission. I, I think it could be a good project for the commission. Any major concerns there, Selena? Since staff, you work for Selena.
Yeah, it's my staff. I think what would be really important as with anything like we do with Human Services, there we need to be very clear guidelines. And, you know, decision criteria for them to weigh any time, because now you're opening this up for more than just. The topic at hand, right? So now they're, they're.
The meat, the commission's objective.
Exactly, yeah, so we would need to be very clear that we're all aligned on what their decision-making criteria are so that they could allocate those grants. You know, in a way, and, and, and I think too that, you know, they would be making that recommendation and then I do. I do agree with Reagan's statement about his alignment on waiving fees. He can do that anytime for any reason and I think there's a there there for both of those options.
Thank you, Selena, Christina.
Do I get to go over?
I didn't see you, okay, go ahead.
You said you were going around and then I had to talk, but then you pecked back.
Go ahead. I was trying to make eye contact, but you kept ignoring me.
I didn't, no, you, you said that. Um, so I want to be careful about us identifying. This event as a separate part of our population or a subset. This would not be. Instead of other groups, this would be including another group, highlighting another piece. To Beth's point. Not everybody has a dad, not everybody has a mom. A lot of these events, if I showed up to the superhero event by myself, yes, I would not feel included. So that is not an event for me. We, we need to be really careful about how we're looking at this and really understand that government is for all. I say this all freaking time, my little soapbox. It's for everyone. Yes, it is our job to pull everybody, all of them. That's all, thank you.
Sorry, I'm missing you.
I know, it's all good.
I don't know, you can hit me with my cane later. Christina.
Um, I, that, that you just said is that we need to make sure that it, they know that it.
Um, I, that you just said is that we need to make sure that it, they know that it's okay to have an event, it is okay to have an event. It's okay to have many events and any event within this city. How we go about that is. The biggest question, right? What we do, what are the criteria, we just touched on criteria which where we didn't touch on them before, Maple Valley had four officers, what would our. Enforcement look like?
How many officers do we have disposable?
We did not have any.
I will, I, that's one thing I did, uh, hear from Laura out there, she said that the the farmer's market who put on the event. Uh, they paid for one officer. And then a patrol officer stopped by and their police chief stopped by, so it looked like quite a large police presence, so. She told me two of their officers and then the farmer's market hires.
Okay. Um, just, just so, as as long as you know, I did, I also did talk to Mick Bali. Um, council members who said that there were groups that came. That were not in favor of this event. What would that look like in Covington? And how would we mitigate that? I have so many questions, it's not that. Somebody should feel like they shouldn't have an event. It's about. What happens and and, you know, and the simple fact that there were opposing groups that came. States that it's not an event inclusive for all, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I, that one, I can't. I, I. Uh, like you said, I'm gonna reject because it's not for all, it's not, it's for a subset and then, and it invites. Things that we would now. Want officers there for. Um, like many, like many city events. Like many city, city events that. It's kind of a normal part, but I don't know that we staff. Not staff, but have or require police presence at many of our other events, um. Maybe some that I don't know about, but none that we would probably want to count on. Um, I, I want this. I want us to be inclusive and for all. And this isn't for all. I want it to be, but it's not.
Do you have anything?
No, well, I wanted. Maybe the choice of words saying subset was not correct, and it certainly didn't mean should have to be offensive. I, I don't mean lesser than, I don't, I don't mean lesser than, I mean a specific group. I I guess I probably just can't. Particularly. If any group were to come to us and say, we would like the city to fund this event, how would we look at that, so I think. I'm looking at it, uh. Group requesting any event. Is my mic on?
Yes.
Sorry, I guess I'm just not talking loud enough, so.
Just a lot of feedback.
I think it's that.
Maybe a better word would be a specific group. So I, I. Maybe the best resolution would be to have. Have this handled with our commission and and give them some grant funds. And let them decide because then. It also kind of falls under them, I mean, there are cultural groups that may feel marginalized. Cultural. Ethnic.
I I could add, they are, um, this is something we talked to Sean about, um, with the June team. I think if you turn some.
Point, can you point your mic, Regan, point your finger to it.
That is too loud. So. You are a sound technician.
You guys can just pay me, I'll I'll only charge a thousand dollars, a hundred.
But the the Equity Cultural Social Justice Commission is working on a Juneteenth uh event that they they want to do, so that. Goes in step with your proposals, what you're saying there.
Okay, go ahead, Beth.
Oh, I I mean, I guess. I under- I understand what we talk about for all and we talk about some events are not for all. And I'm gonna just tell you about this experience that I had that has to do with ADA and accessibility, okay? Our family decided to go on a hike and my niece wasn't, is in a wheel, was in a wheelchair at the time. We decided we were gonna go up that hill with her, one of us carried the wheelchair, the other one carried my niece. And we get up there to the top and we were able to do our thing. We didn't expect every single trail that we were on to be wheelchair accessible, we made that choice to do that. What we expect is there are at least some options somewhere nearby that they can do that. And so when we talk about. Holistically what our community is doing, not every event is going to be for all. But do we have a majority of our events that fit for most people and then we have some special ones so that other people can feel included? And I think that's kind of how I. I look at it, right, not every single park is gonna be wheelchair accessible. But most of them are gonna have some. Paved trail and then a natural trail, so everybody gets their choice. And so I kind of look at this kind of a, a. Um, topic in that vein, right, and again, I'm not saying we necessarily need to put cash funding toward it unless we wanna do a grant thing. But I do believe that if we say, hey. We're gonna support this in, in this way. Promote it or provide the venue for it, um, at no charge. It is, you know, and they're providing a public benefit. Then it will be benefiting other people, not just the folks that show up, folks that show up.
I guess at some point, I'd just like to get. The. I don't, it's not motion or my suggestion that we zero out the logo. Didn't just say that's a thousand bucks we could use, so, I'd just like to get at least a. Thumbs up or down on that, so I can take it off the table or we can keep moving forward on it if we're gonna do that. Okay, so when, when do we do that is what I'm asking.
Deliberate, right now we're discussing.
Okay, alright. Okay, cause then I've got other option, the only other thing I would say. I love. I'm, you know, been on this council ten years, you know, it's, it's, I really appreciate everyone's. You know, commitment, we're, you know, we're not getting rich doing this, we're doing our best and I know each one of you. Is, we're all looking at what we think is best for the entire community, um, and. This is kind of one of the first issues that we've kind of had some. Differences on. And as our city grows, we're probably gonna have more of those, um, cause more and new people are moving in and we are. Going to be stretched. To accommodate other people's. Concerns, desires, whatever we wanna call it, um. So I, I guess I would just say that. We need to find ways of. Recognizing that and addressing those. And I guess I, I don't wanna stop on it down a bit, just. If the threat of protest. Makes us second guess what we're gonna do for our programs. That means we're allowing people that don't share what the community. What we had decided, so let's say we approve this event, but we're concerned that it's gonna be a protest. I mean, that's driving what we're gonna de- determine we're gonna be for, I, I can't. I can't say that, just can't support that, that we would say if the threat of people coming to protest an event. Is what determines whether we'll support it or not, that's, I don't, we don't wanna be put in that position either, so. I would take that off the table too and say, let's be bold and we defend our, our values. How we do that, you know, we're, that's what we're debating right now, but I'm not, I don't want us to start setting the precedent of someone. Besides, you're gonna come and protest our event, that, oh, we can't do that, cause there are things worth. Standing up for in this, in this country, so, anyway. Okay, that's it.
It it's interesting to me that we talk about this event like it never happened, right? And we are planning for the future, when in fact it did happen, um, we, the city did. Waive fees. An event like this was put on last June. I think similar to what you're. We're trying to achieve, um. I wonder why that's not recognized, I'm. I feel like that's. It's a little underwhelming also, um, there was an event, the city waived fees. Perhaps there wasn't as much promotion from the city, which is different to me, um. I'm not against integrating all of our. Commissions and having a system in place and allowing people to voice. Themselves and be who they are. Um, again, I'm gonna go back to what it. Clarifying. Parameters, all of that. I'll be the first one to say that I don't want anyone to feel like they're left out, but we also have to, we have a duty as the government. And, um, this, this event was put on already, um, last June, it was wonderful, I hear. Why are we not recognizing that? The city waived fees. And did what they could at the time, perhaps, that's the difference and if, and and that's, that's a different conversation in my mind, you know, than. A decision card that looks like that, um, but. I'm glad we're moving forward, we always do, we find a middle ground, it's not. Zero and it's not a hundred, we come to an agreement. I hope that we can always come to an agreement, um, even when we don't agree, especially when we don't agree, um. I'm glad that we're moving towards the direction that we're living.
I am a hundred percent fine with us having a pride event, I think it's great, I think it gives people who feel. Marginalized a place to come together and communicate with each other and find out if they. Find out what they're doing to do, to make their, their lives better, to make their own, to make other people's lives better. It is where. It is where you get to meet those people who care about you that you've never met before. That's true and that's true at a pride event, that's true at Covington Days, that's true in a classroom, that's true everywhere. We, we are here, we have been debating, I started a timer, cause I knew this was gonna take a while, we have been talking about this for fif- almost an hour. Because we care so much about our community, we don't want anyone left out. And I'm not gonna, I have been throughout this conversation, listening to all of us, but I've also been on Seattle Pride's website. Because I wanna know what they're doing. To make their event so much. So attractive to so many people. Seattle Pride is a five oh one C three, they are not, I'm looking at their sponsors and so far the city of Seattle hasn't even come up. And I'm on their bronze sponsors still. They got a lot. Like, I'm sure Seattle's in there somewhere, I just. Don't have the time to find it while we're trying to have this conversation, they have a. But this, uh, but Seattle Pride also has grants and sponsorship opportunities where they will gladly give money to other groups.
So they waived their permit fees and funded a float.
Okay.
That was their bottom.
If we fund a float, I a hundred percent am not gonna be on it because it's a per, it's a, cause it's a parade and I, you all know my feelings on parades. But I know we're not doing one of those, but, but what I am, what I. There are ways for us to help. This event. That gives them the opportunity, but it's not. Us giving them the money, it's giving them the resources, just because, resources aren't necessarily dollars, resources are information. That's what I told my students, I'm giving you the tools to figure out things, now. I fully believe that we should still continue to waive our fees, expedite their permits. I don't care if they throw the name Co- Covington Pride all over the place, I want them, cause I want the, I want the community to know, we. Want everybody here. Regardless of your creed, your race, your re- uh, creed is religion, uh, your sexual. Orientation. We don't care, we want you to come here and feel comfortable making this your home. I think the best way for us to do this is to make sure we are giving the organizers of this event all of the tools necessary. And that might include. Not this year, because we haven't talked with. The Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission about this, cause I'm sure this would be a conversation that they would love to have with us. About doing possible grants, now those grants could include monetary. Things, or it could include helping them find other resources. I firmly believe we should be helping. Every group who wants to come to us for help that is not. And I repeat this, not going to destroy the inclusivity that we have built in this community. I believe that we should, anything that we do with that means that we are helping everyone to succeed, that includes. Our LGBT QIA. Plus community, what we need to do though, is I think we need to. Create a grant funding pro- process for. Any of these organizations that are gonna come and do a public benefit. I love where you're coming from on this, Sean, I really, really do. I don't think we can do it this year, I think though, if we start talking with the ECSJ and telling them. I got it, that's gonna be the only time today I get that. And we start planning next year, that, and we start planning with them next year to do this and they start and we. Having to meet with the Human Services Commission so that they can find out how they do it and maybe. Come up with some plans and then at our annual meeting, we discuss how they do it. I have no problem with twenty twenty seven, us figuring out that grant funding and maybe, and s- instead of the decision card being for. The pride event, it's ECSJ gets ten thousand dollars to fi- help different groups. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but I, I'm hopeful in twenty, by twenty twenty seven, we don't have the budget issues we have. So, that is just my feeling, I, I know this came from a place of love from Sean's heart. I think we all have a place of love for everybody in this community regardless of where you came from. But I think we definitely, we have to find a better way to administer it.
So. I haven't had a chance to say anything, I've been, I've been, no, I've.
We're gonna be here another hour.
Know me, I always like to hear what everybody else has to say. So, when I first saw this, I mean, Sean and I actually talked about this back in June before we knew what our financial budget situation was. And I was. On board with it. Excuse me. Hope I'm not getting what Michelle asked, um. Touch everybody, no. But anyway. I was totally, after seeing what Regan presented, a very balanced budget, I was against all. Any budget cards, decision cards, I was, even some of the ones that you have suggested for funding. Um, because I want and I've been on this council now for. This is twenty two years and we've always maintained a balance. Only by six months. We've always maintained a balance, I mean, there's been some years that have been extremely difficult, we've had to cut. A lot of things that we had, we cut. Landscaping, we cut concerts in the park, we cut a lot of things. We cut athletics, there was a time when we didn't even do athletics. So. To do five thousand dollars for a single group. Uh, you know. With shortage, we have people asking for police officers and we're talking about, are we gonna come up with? Three hundred, I know five thousand's a drop in the bucket compared to three hundred thousand. I like. What Joe brought up and then what Beth said about, you know, we're. Waiving fees and, I mean, everybody had valuable information about what. Needs to be done and it's not just. The, this community, it's not just about any other community, I mean. When we did Covington Days and we were handing out ice cream, having a lot of the new residents that moved into the. The KB homes there by Real Life Church showed up. And then. I've actually taken time now to, I don't walk it, I drive slowly and we talk, um, but I, I continue to talk to. The. Groups, the families that have moved in there because of all the different demographics that we have. Have a hard time saying that I wanna spend money, but. I don't have a problem putting five thousand and letting the. Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee, Commission make decisions and have people apply, but doing with what Beth said. And part of the application is. Waiving fees or waiving. Grant, or you know. And helping with education for any. Cultural group that needs it. And that, that's my opinion, um, and so, I mean, this is. Our budget session, this is where we decide, do we wanna put money? And so, I mean, this is our budget session. This is where we decide, do we wanna put money towards a specific decision card? We set money aside now so it's in the budget, and do we continue discussing it even further during our summit in January? If we do go the method that Joe suggested, we would wanna bring in the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, but that's also, we as a group, we've always worked together and we always agree to disagree on things. But at the end of the day, we're doing what's best for our entire, for all, for our entire com- for community. I'd be curious where you got the nine percent from?
Yeah, that's what someone on
Cause I'm going, when I, when I look at statistics, I'm, I don't see it, but statistics are only as good as the person that enters them into the computer, goes back. Yeah, it's a percentage. So, it could be higher, it could be lower, you know? My times speaking in the schools, in elementary schools, you can definitely see the diversity there. So, I guess the question is, one, do we want to move forward with funding five thousand? And two, do we fund it for one particular group, or do we spread it out and allow people to uh apply for funds, but also going one step further like with what Beth was saying on that application is, does the city help do social media? Even though we aren't sponsoring, let's say a group doesn't want funds, they just want advertising from the city. That could be on that application as well and would go towards that. I mean, I'm, thoughts on? Go ahead, Beth.
Uh with Purple Light Night, um that Rotary took over, uh we, we branded as a community event, like we're not trying to own it, right? But we are moving it and making it continue to happen. With, but it couldn't happen without support from the city, right? Because like it would be cost prohibitive for permits and all of the other, and then since we're doing a walk, like there's some things that they provide and of course they're the ones that have to flip the switch, because it's Public Works. I mean, I guess one of us probably could if we were there. Right, so, so I think like that application process is kind of already there. I mean, I don't think it would be that far stretched to say this is what we can do. And then you know, we had to fill out the application, just like it, you know, it was new this year. It was a little bit more, I'm like, oh, okay, well, duh, 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 you know? For the special use permit or, you know, and that type of a thing. And then like, what are we, you know, gonna do? And so it's not, it's not terribly burdensome, I didn't think. I mean, it was different, but and if it's already mostly there, we can tweak if there's anything else that we wanna do, because we feel like the number or the groups are gonna be expanding that might apply for something like that. But always had to say, what does the community benefit? Like you have to write down something specific, so it's not just them comping something, right? Anyway, two cents on that. I think it's my opinion.
So I guess, thank you, Beth. Does council feel comfortable funding five thousand dollars? For
Five thousand dollars for a grant?
Thank you. I like that. Five thousand dollars to go towards ECSJ initiatives and letting the commission go through a grant process. And I, whether they meet jointly with Human Services, which would help, I would have, if Julie has time to work with Daphne, thank you, to help kinda guide that. Is that gonna be too burdensome for staff?
And then let the um, uh the commission make a decision.
And would we be able to pull that together quickly enough to support a June event?
I, I think
Would we be able to pull that together soon enough for June event?
I, I think we can do that.
Christina?
Um, seeing as this will be year one, uh and with about you know, a few months, not even a full year, do we feel like five thousand is necessary? Or could we kinda test the waters with maybe three thousand? Twenty five hundred dollars, I'm com- more comfortable with that, um. Maybe if it'll ramp up with popularity with the citizens and, and then we could revisit again.
Yeah, I would certainly think twenty five hundred would be a little easier on our budget this year. The next year's gonna get any better. But um to, to kind of ramp it as needed.
Um appreciate all of that, for the suggestion. So regardless, if you put the, the money in the ECSJ community, just wanna be clear, we're on the record that regardless of whether we throw any plugs in for this year's pride, you know, we're gonna commit to things like waiving their fees and that includes like um what is it, broadcasting fees or the, the sound fees?
Uh no, we wouldn't waive any of those. What we waive is permit fees and What's that?
Why should we bring somebody outside the city? Right, interesting. Yeah, we don't, okay.
I, I hesitate to say that I commit to do that, because it all depends on the public benefit they're willing to offer. That's how I'll make that decision.
Okay, so all being equal to the exact same event as last year? We are committing to recognition.
Yeah, if they did the clothing bank or
How about a proclamation? That's something we recognize name?
That's the mayor's choice.
So, promotion? Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if we're gonna not fund it.
Well, I think for things like this, we should discuss it at the summit. Cause we're only discussing, we're talking budget right now. Details.
Associated with them, but
I, it is a question I had about the promotion as well. So we haven't heard from Carla and we, we can wait if you want me, if you're talking
No, go ahead.
At the summit, but
I think, I think the application process should include funding and if funded, then we would promote it. But something approved by the ECSJ, I wouldn't necessarily open it up to any applicant just to ask for promotions, because that's like starting a community calendar. That's a lot of work for a staff person that doesn't have the capacity to, to run a promotional platform for community events that aren't
So only those that receive funding from the commission?
That's what I would suggest. And right now, um we currently do promote things that ECSJ collectively as a group votes on to promote. Um it's not often, a lot of the times they miss, they don't have forums, so um it's, it's kind of random, but it'd be like Juneteenth, Filipino Heritage American Month. I think we did pride last year. I think that pride was one that they asked to promote on social media. And it, and it changes based on what they want, but it's I would say easier, but also less problematic to um take their suggestions that council approves, um and promote those things on city uh platforms than it is to just open it up to the, the community.
So while I wasn't done with what I would, so I appreciate that. So, is that different than recognition then? Would that be different than Facebook posts? Are you talking? That's also, that's the same thing. So that's gonna probably be a deal breaker there, cause that's part of what they're looking for, cause we wouldn't be able to brand it with the city. Well, no, no, I'm saying if we decide, so this is the whole reason for this decision card was to help raise the awareness of this event. And if we're not committing now yeah, to, that basically would come away with my, like, nothing. I was willing to go yeah, I was willing to say, maybe, yeah, we could kick it in there if the city was willing to, you know, say, yeah, we'll waive those fees. We'll have a booth, you know, we'll, one of us will attend and, and our city position. And we consider a proclamation and a recognition. Those that, I think at a minimum, but if we're not doing that, then
I almost feel like that would fall under a city's sponsorship. If they're not asking for direct monetary funding, um we have other groups that come to us asking for city sponsorship, like the Makers Market, Purple Light Nights. I think that's a little separate and something that might work under that criteria, but
Could the grant process, like, we're looking for sponsorship?
I, I think that's a separate process. I think that's a whole
I think they could do both.
Yeah, yeah, they could apply.
I mean, Purple Light Nights could essentially apply for this, right? For a grant from the ECSJ as well.
The only thing you won't be able to do is a flag raising, because these are private flag poles.
Well, here, we could put flagpole somewhere else like they did last year. And that was something that's future. I thought we should put a flagpole at the CCP at some point. It's be nice to have one.
Yeah, that's what they do in Maple Valley. Because that's a, and then the farmer's market is not a, that's how, because the farmer's market ran it last year. City of Kent owns their own flagpoles, but the city of Maple Valley does not put it at the city hall.
Yeah, no, I'm not against, you know, putting a flagpole somewhere else. I guess, I thought we had consensus on that moving forward. And I was willing to compromise if those other things were going to be offered. Well, the, like I said, the recognition, possible proclamation, city, but some attendance. And then a booth, a presence there. And then the branding, I like Joe's idea, you know, that's all. Very little skin off our nose. And it's, you know? And again, I'll put my, what's, if it's gonna cost us, it will zero out the logo wear, but
So, I'll go back then. So is council is your council consensus to move forward with putting funding? Let me get back to that dollar amount, but putting funding first to the Equity Cultural Social Justice Initiative campaign?
That, yeah.
Does that work? Let's show a raise of hands for that. And that way, anyone, or not anyone, any group can apply for that through a grant process similar to what Human Services does. Okay, so we have consensus for that. Now let's talk about dollar amount. The original for a single event was five thousand. Considering what else we have to cut and stuff, do we wanna do, I know there's been numbers thrown around. Do we wanna do three thousand dollars for the first year to see how it goes?
For that grant.
With, but Joe's, was no one group can get the full amount. But is three thousand work?
For the ECSJ budget?
Yes.
But can we put a cap on what one group does?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we said, is no one group can get the full amount.
Up to a thousand dollars.
So up to a thousand dollars, but that thousand dollars doesn't include the waiving of fees as long as they provide a public benefit. So that would be more. So if they provide a bu- public benefit, then not only can apply for the thousand dollars, they would also then get the equivalent, it's like, let's say the fees were fifteen hundred dollars. Now they're getting twenty five hundred dollars, because fifteen hundred is waived. Discount, go ahead, Joe.
Oh no, I was just raising my hand and
Is council good with that? Does this work for the city? Three thousand? So does this work for staff though?
Let, let me just run through it. So three thousand dollars goes to a grant to the commission, is that right?
Correct.
And cap that each individual organization can get up to one thousand?
In actual cash?
Cash money.
That's all the commission has to give.
But then, there's also additional, if they provide a public benefit as
I, I, I tell you, I just don't know it's part of that.
Okay.
Okay, and, and then what about to your point? Something going to pride, because potentially maybe they, maybe they get ten applications, maybe it hasn't
But even if they don't get the funding, what yeah, for that, I, they're gonna put in, I guess that's fine. What's the process for?
Well, I mean
And what support does it?
I mean, right now was um working through Parks and our department. And then they would send me the application, we'd fill it out and then put it back in and then they'd look it over and all that and then say, okay, yeah, we think this is good. And then you have to hide insurance and all the other stuff to make sure that, you know, it's covered in case it was an accident. So basically, we were taking, Rotary was taking on pretty much all the liability of it, right? There was a little bit difference there, because you're in the public right of way and all that, and it was not necessarily all on city property. In fact, almost none of it was, except for the block, right? So over here, if somebody wants to visit the park, what does that look like? And the question is to his point, is the grant application, are we saying that if they don't want money, but they want all of this other stuff? Cause there's some people that just want the cash and they're okay giving us, because that's what they need. And there's some people that might want both.
Well, for the promotion side, I think where we landed is if the commission funds it, we'll promote it.
So what do we do with Purple Light Night?
So, can we give the ECSJ three thousand and mandate that a thousand or five hundred of it is used for a pride event this year? And we are mandating that you do that as a kickoff. What you do after that, more power to you.
I don't know if I would want to mandate that it goes to any specific groups. I want it
But the cards for a pride event?
Well, all right, but so I think
I'm going off of what Beth said is that, because the city helped promote Purple Light Nights? Because they went through that process. So if pride
Well, I was gonna say, but I don't think that was an option to the pride.
If that's an option for the pride event, that they, maybe they don't want the cash. They just want to go through the process of like what Purple Light Nights did, then
Whatever support Purple Light Night is getting for theirs, I think that's what we should provide. We're already doing it. So now we're saying, why aren't, why wouldn't we do it for this group?
So that'll probably cost more than, than what this decision card is.
Okay, then, let's take that off and I, like I said
Just because of the staff time, right? It's the sponsorship. Because when, when the, when the commission, not the commission, but the yeah, when, when that ended, which was led by, by city staff, there was no one to keep that going. And so we thought, well, if we could partner with Rotary, we can make that happen. So Ethan, maybe Carla, what's, yeah, Makers Market. So what would be that process if, if it was just, we want a sponsorship from the city, not this grant process that we've been discussing?
I mean, I think generally they come to you or the city for, to ask for that sponsorship. And then if we agree that that's of a benefit, there is a contracting, contract in place for that and special event. But for, so for example, for Makers Market, we provide the space. Um it's all, it's all in kind. So we provide the space, provided the porta potties, we provided the maintenance crew to maintain the space and be on site. I provide all the marketing support, banners and design for that, so which is different though. Purple Light Nights has a different set of criteria for what the city is in kind. So it can change based on that. But I, I feel like for something like this, it would have to probably be approved by council.
Yeah, and if I can just add to that, um like using the, the Purple Light Nights as an example. It's a, it's a contract that like Beth said, has insurance requirements and everything else, but it also outlines what the city's responsibilities are and what the uh event organizers of responsibilities are. And those could be different uh for each different type of event and arrangement, so.
So
And I, I, I don't know, Beth, what insurance looks like for you, but insurance for Makers Markets.
Well, for us, it was, I mean, it's covered under Rotary, so it didn't, it didn't cost our club anything, because we paid. Right, but then like is it gonna be like that at a perk where?
The group got a, got insurance for the pride event.
Oh, did they really? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everybody, all groups have to have insurance. You get Lions Club, has to have insurance for cornucopia.
Took care of that, yeah.
So I think what I'm trying to figure out, so if we, if we do the grant program through the commission and, and promote anything that they fund, what, what else are, is council wanting to happen on top of?
Well, I just, that's, that's a totally separate, separate, yeah. I'm not satisfied with I'm not satisfied with the other, so.
So is it, is it possible that? You know, I'm sure they're gonna go, hey, we have this scenario, you know, we've got this program coming, put your grant application, if you're interested in application. Starts February first through March, whatever, and then they get whatever they get. And then each individual group can say what they want, right? Like, we would like, city council member there, we would like. You know, oh, hey, and, you know, if you wanna throw one hundred bucks, if that's the requirement is for cash, then they can look it over. And then that would be where the city goes, we can handle it, how do you guys feel? Or are we gonna put our final approval on all of it? Or is it just gonna, are we going to take their recommendation and we should look at it?
I think it's just like with every commission, when they bring stuff forward, it's, it's up to us for the final decision.
Right, right.
And as far as going with some of the things you brought up, proclamations and stuff, everybody can submit for a proclamation, just like the Hindu. For.
So, so council would like to see the funding recommendations that, that the commission gives.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's the city's.
Right, yeah.
Money. Is council good with this?
What if we decide?
Yeah, what if we decide?
We decided three thousand dollars. For a grant process to go through the Equity Cultural Social Justice Initiative Campaign. For them to decide with no more than a thousand dollars in actual cash. Be given to any one specific group, if they're looking for cash. Yeah. Debbie?
Question on promoted, are we just talking Facebook posts? That's not that that's just, because I know that's a lot of work, but, but it doesn't mean branding use of the city name, does it? It wouldn't be called the, the city, city of Covington.
They could call it the Covington Pride Event or Covington whatever.
Which they did last year. I don't think they use the city of Covington.
No, 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 it was Covtown.
Well, that's cool.
But they did use logos for some. Yeah, they just said the names, yeah.
Okay, we good with that?
I guess I'm still stumped that we're not giving money to Pride. I'm, I'm, I feel like the, we just wanna round it, which is a very political thing to do. I am willing to say Jennifer Harderhausen, council member, is willing to give up logo wear this year, right now, and give it to the organizers of Pride. That is what I am willing to do.
Yeah.
I don't feel that we're being bold at all. We're being safe, which I know we love to do.
I'll just bring consensus because we have a three and three, so.
And is that for ongoing or?
Yeah, just to make sure that it's kicked off and this is laid to rest and resolved. And that also gives time for staff to figure out managing ECSJ. I just feel like that's a process that could have a lot of variables and this will get lost in the shuffle.
Joe?
I'm sorry.
Selena?
I just, I just, I'm kind of peeing Daphne while we're going through this and she's like, this is great, good to know. She's like, but the ECSJ has, does not have enough members to always meet quorum. Right now. August because of quorum issues. So either more people need to join that commission to be able to be decision makers. Or we might need to have like a, this didn't happen this year because they couldn't meet because of, I just wanna like lay that out there.
I had a note to bring up when we get to the end of this, that, that we may, no, I appreciate you bringing up that we may not be able to use the commission. To make these funding decisions next year, but we could use a couple of the commission members and staff to do it.
Okay, Joe?
I am just gonna say that we've been talking for an hour and a half. And I was wondering if we could maybe take a quick break to get lunch and then come back and continue the discussion.
I'd like to finish this right now.
I would love to wrap it up.
So. So Christina?
Can I point out that, you know, there, there were other submissions? Even within our emails and whatnot that were, you know, pointed out that, hey, we've never gotten funded. Um, there's a lot of public benefit there for that commission.
We're talking about Pride.
Yeah.
Where we need to stay focused on that, money or not.
But, but it's, it's money, okay. But it's, if one, a yes for someone is a no for another.
Joe?
I believe firmly, we are starting a grant program that's gonna give out up to a thousand dollars for any group. The ECSJ, gosh, I almost put, uh, will give a thousand dollars to Pride. I'm a firm believer that no matter what they write on there, that they will give money to Pride. Hearing what she was saying, I don't know.
If you want me to.
Yeah.
Um, so as part, and, and it's, you know, the group changes, so this could also be different moving forward, so it's not an absolute and I'll own that. But this year, when Daphne went as their work plan with the ECSJ, they wanted to do one event. And they were lingering on Pride and they were lingering on Juneteenth, okay? They chose Juneteenth for a couple reasons. One, there wasn't anywhere else you could go to get like really a Juneteenth celebration, right? People, there, theirs was like, you could go these other places, there's not really anything here around that. Um, and that's a group that they felt was super underrepresented in, in having celebratory. Um, moments, yeah, recognition, thank you. And so they, they purposely did not choose the Juneteenth this last year. And then obviously, the, sorry, the Pride, and then, and then this came up, so. I think.
This is different.
This is different. This would be a fun.
Not, not if we have the capacity to do that.
Right, right. But I, but I think that that goes back to the criteria question and, you know, because if you get fifteen different things and maybe there is. You know, a different groups that, to that same vein, you might not, you know. So.
I guess I just call out, I just, I wanna vote on Jennifer's suggestion and let's just get on the record, just do it, so. Whether it resolves it or not, that's fine with me.
I'll give up a thousand dollar logo wear.
We're already giving up a thousand dollars to go into this three thousand dollar.
No, I'm just, what I'm saying.
But we're, we're.
I just wanna vote.
So make it two thousand.
I, I don't even care if we don't spend any money, other, if we're doing the support, that's gonna be a huge, that's it.
I'm just fine doing support, I'm, I'm not fine dedicating a thousand dollars.
Great, thank you.
But I don't, yeah.
We'll see.
I, I, I think what we agreed on would be our submission, which is our thing, I'm sorry, that's, it's fair.
This is, this is the time to make the decision. The money is what will make the sponsorship happen. Mark my words.
Yeah.
Being fearful here.
Yeah.
Has.
I don't think it has to do with fear.
Yes, it does.
I don't think we're being fearful. We're not even following the same thing the city of Seattle, following the same way the Seattle, city of Seattle does it, how are we being fearful?
One time, thousand bucks.
City Seattle's never given them a thousand bucks to begin.
You know that for me.
That thing's been going on for years. They might have kicked it off in the beginning.
So.
City Seattle wasn't even, didn't recognize.
We have two people that wanna do a thousand dollars right now for Pride and the, everybody else wants to just go through with the. Grant funding, is that what we have?
Yes.
All right, I need.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with the grant funding.
Well, I'll, I'll go for a thousand if that's what it is. I mean, I could go five hundred, I could go a hundred, I don't care, I just want something on record that pins it. And that, that isn't a lot of money, because that's not really, they're gonna get money through sponsorships.
For sure. Five hundred bucks.
Way well, way well.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be a thousand dollars, but it, I, I want the commitment today.
So what would the money change?
In George sponsorship.
Yeah. And it would get to those things that Reagan was saying about, did things.
Right now, this is all, we'll have this discussion again at summit, we'll have this discussion again when it's like, hey, you guys. I know we sponsored these two events and ever asked you, but for this one, we need to bring it to council.
Yeah.
Looking for the funding just to get the sponsorship, if council wants this event sponsored, we'll, we'll promote it, well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I don't want another meeting, I wanna come out of here. I'm, whatever the resolution is, that's fine. I want us on the record now, saying what we're gonna say. And it looks like it's four, three, three, four, you know? But I don't wanna leave here with the impression that maybe we'll get these things. Tell us straight out now, we're not gonna get.
Telling you, right now, I have no problem with the sponsorship. If they ask for a proclamation, they have to go through, they have to go through the same process as anyone else. I'm not gonna guarantee a proclamation unless they go through the process that you asked for.
That's what I'm, what I'm looking for, but things like boot, you know, that sort on the website, you know, I just, it's too.
Like, um, what do you mean?
Are we all in or are we not? Like, I don't think we are.
Yeah, so I think that, that's, it's like. Just be honest and say, we're not in on it, you know, that's fine.
But that's what you want, yes or no, are we in or not?
Yeah, are we in or not?
Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
So the other question I have, could we, if we are not sure about the funding part, that's something that we could put on the agenda for a future meeting and. And say, we're gonna support it by the da, 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 right?
Yeah.
Or would we, I mean.
I'm fine with that.
But if it's fine enough for a vote, so that it moves forward.
Okay, can you restate that? You're fine with, you're suggesting that we move forward with support. But not, not funding at this time, they need to go through the grant process.
I'm afraid that if we don't, if we do the grant process and it is kind of a clunky thing, they won't get anything approved in time for the event in June. And then we're stuck with the same situation that we were last year.
We'll make sure it happens.
But Reagan said that.
But it's most likely going to be staff driven for this next year.
Okay.
As far as administering the grants.
So a mix, a mix of.
I'd love to have one or two commission members join us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we've got.
It would have to have staff at all times, even in years coming, you'd have to have staff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, but just this year, there's not permission.
So do we have consensus to move forward with that?
So you're back to the three thousand to the.
But we're giving support to. Commission. To the Pride event, but also, I'm gonna take one step further, we'll give support to other groups that wanna come forward and ask for that. I mean, that's, oh, yeah, whatever.
So we're rolling, we're rolling the support into the decision card, even though there's no monetary.
That's not monetary, the monetary three thousand goes to ECSJ.
So what is, what is getting support from that? I'm confused.
The ECSJ bucket.
Oh, so the same thing we said.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I, I had a question about the support comment made as well, what, um. So what, what, in, in addition to giving grant money to the commission, what, what were you mentioning?
If the, if Pride or any group wishes for a proclamation, they can apply.
Oh, gotcha, sure, sure.
Do that, yeah.
And you, but you said support, what? Is that the only support you're talking about? Or you're talking about needs?
If they come through with a proclamation and ask for city support to be on the social media, they would go through the grant process.
Okay. Okay.
I still want money going towards it. I mean, if we're outvoted, that's fine, but we need to actually vote, like.
Yeah.
I don't, yes, five hundred bucks, I'll drop it, I'll drop it.
What if it was a commitment that a portion of the grants go to Pride, then the United States is funded on top of that?
That's also assuming it all gets kicked off on time and there's a quorum and there's a policy.
Like, like I said, we'll make it happen.
Okay, is, is pretty good with what Reagan suggested.
Well, what I was saying is council could direct the, a portion of the three thousand dollar grant funds for next year, go to this Pride event. Then you don't have to um, fund anything above and beyond it.
Why would we do that? Can we do that? We know what we're doing, can we do that right now?
Yes.
Can we get consensus on it?
So that would be.
Five hundred bucks.
The commission or staff have it?
Without them going through the grant process?
Well, that, that would be, that would be something for you to decide, whether you.
If they successfully go through the grant process, there's gonna be a. A grant for them. I'm good with that.
Okay, I guess I was fine with the, going through the grant and having a grant pot of money, but if. And I know you're saying that the commission's not. Uh, you know, it's spotty because of the tendence. And I guess I would like to see some kind of a timeline of. This is the application process, this is when we're gonna make a decision so that we know that some of these groups that are operating in the beginning of the year will have.
We obviously don't have that building up, but so we're confident we could.
Yeah.
Award a grant in the next couple of months.
Right, yep.
Yes, we can do anything, we're, we're powered, we're, we're pretty successful. I just, you know, I think this goes back to the discernment that we will have to make, because if you get like four applications or, you know, of these groups. We're gonna have to pick or we're gonna have to suggest that.
You know, your suggestion of having at least two of the ECSJ members.
Yeah, and that, you know, and that's assuming you get an application for such an event this year and. I mean, it'll work just like the human services, it's kind of how I picture it, you know? You, you'll decide off of what you get submitted to you.
All right, are we good with this?
I, I guess, I still don't know, but we're, we're great, so Jennifer's.
I still think we should just say five hundred bucks, we will donate to a Pride event in.
We'll be done.
The name of City of Covington.
The end result is the same, why are we focused on not?
Because right now, we're putting it all on things that have not even been created.
Yeah, it may not happen. Yeah.
Maybe the decision card shouldn't, if we're gonna talk about Pride, it shouldn't be a dollar amount, it should say the city will support a Pride event. Pride event by dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, that's what I proposed that earlier, yeah.
Do it for this year and then decide what we're gonna do next year, we get the grant money in there and then they can, we'll see how that process.
Yeah, he has his little list over there.
Yeah, I was, I was willing to compromise.
I don't know.
Yeah, and it's just, those are things.
Then that cuts.
Recognition.
Have no problem with recognition, both support, yeah, but.
Wedding fee.
Yeah.
We already did.
We already do that.
Right. So what you're suggesting is that we not try to kick off that. The commission decision this year, maybe table that for next year, but for this year, say. No money, but we will support the event through. Um, no fees in social media session.
Me, cause.
It's not like we did this, this year, except we didn't do social.
Yeah.
But I, but I guess, because what we were talking about is if we give them, if we give the pot to the commission. The only way we're gonna do all this other stuff is if they, if they get a grant, which is timely, it can, is. As they're working through the process, they may not get it till May, or how are they gonna know what they're gonna get until?
I, my perception was, uh, this first year would be a very loose grant process.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
But anyway.
Okay, I think. Are we settled on this now?
For now.
Okay, so it's now twelve forty, so let's take a break for lunch and then we'll come back and talk about the decision card for Human Services.
I will go quick.
Yeah.
Cause you don't talk like he does.
Prepares.
That's where I hope so.
I hope so.
I got a birthday celebration, not hosting up.
Hey, excuse me, do we wanna make this a working lunch?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take fifteen minutes to get your food and we'll come back. Actually, make, let's make it twenty minutes, and we'll come back in twenty minutes at one P M. All right, good afternoon, everybody, welcome back. We are back to continue our. Budget discussion. And next, we are moving into Human Service Decision Card Request by Jennifer. Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Thank you so much for that. You're on it, thank you. We need a dollar jar for every time she has to say Mike check.
It's an extra sandwich.
Um, so as we, as we're all very aware, uh, feedback from Human Services Commission. Um, feedback from, you know, especially those of us that, that serve in various organizations around the community. It's clear that Human Services is an increasing need. What I find that we, we seemingly realize when we're having these discussions about. What I find that we, we seemingly realize when we're having these discussions about. Approving, you know, where they've, uh, where the commission has decided funds go, we're always like, oh. Oh, we should have more money for this, so I was like, I'm gonna hold on to this, and I'm going to make sure that we discuss it at the appropriate time. Um, and. I, I put in a budget card for what I consider a very conservative, modest. Funding increase of ten percent, it's currently a hundred and thirty six, I think five hundred is what I saw in the, the budget, but this is a hundred and thirty six K. Um, a ten percent increase, obviously, we could double it and use it. Um, but I, I just, I feel like we need to ensure that it, it grows. Um, if we can't do it every year, just sometimes, and when you're in. Especially in a budget tight situation as a government. The things to, to really lean in on are, um. Supporting those in the most need, because, uh, I would assume that there is a, a strong correlation between. You know, increase in crime and, you know, as people get desperate and, and need things like food and shelter, so ten percent, I feel like is. Is, is a, a small amount to, uh, to, uh, increase this funding. And that is all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions? Feedback? Solicitations?
Take the floor for. How long do we have?
You have thirty seconds. Thanks for playing.
Totally agree, I support this and I even have thought on how we would fund that itself, so. Uh, but when we're ready to talk about that, I'll, I can load a report.
Anybody else? Beth, support it? Yes.
We. We fund Aha and. R and P with. Human services funds or outside of? Human services funds.
The like storehouse isn't.
Fund those for three years.
I mean, with the pulse of what's happening with the food industry. I'm leaning. To, to be prepared.
Give a thumbs up to move forward with a ten percent increase? We'll have to discuss where we're gonna come up with it, cause it's not in the budget.
I almost suggested I go before Sean, but it's like, oh.
People retired of it.
I, I heard Sean was giving up part of his salary for this.
So we'll put the thirteen thousand six in as a potential budget increase. Now, Casey is not gonna be able to give us the update today. You wanna give us, tell us. Yeah, forecast.
Yeah, so, um. Mic on. Uh, Casey is feeling worse. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so she asked if we could, um, do the forecast on Tuesday night, so from. If council's okay with that, we could amend the agenda that night. Um, but what would be good to do here, I have a few more things to go over. And then it would be good to, uh, get from council. What you want plugged into that forecast, so we can see, obviously, we've got this ten percent increase. Uh, for a human services, the three thousand for the commission. And, and the police office, okay, so far, so, but, uh, we can talk more about those. I wanted to point out a couple of things before getting into the forecast. That are the things that are really. Not hurting us too bad now, but in ten years, if we're not really smart, they will hurt us really bad. So you can see with our, uh, police costs here, and you've seen this, this graph before, but it's pretty telling. So this is between two thousand seventeen and twenty twenty six. We've grown our F T Es, total personnel, by just over three. Right during, during that time period, yet we've had over three point four million dollar cost increase. In that, so. And as we've mentioned, just from twenty four to our budget we're working on now, a one point four million dollar increase. So obviously, that trend is extremely concerning for us. And council's done a great job providing some, some revenue sources, like the B and O, sorry, did you have a question on that?
I just wanna write, cause it cut it off, I just wanna see.
I can email you this if you prefer.
No, it's, cause it's.
There's not much of a difference, but.
Yeah, that's weird.
It's literally not present.
We didn't want you guys.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So thankfully, we implemented the V and O, and the thought was, we did that, that's going to take us out several years for. For public safety, but you can see, and, and so those bars are not total costs for public safety. Those are just the changes in the contract costs, so the increases. Right, so the base of what we've been paying this year and, and past is not included in this, just the change. So you can see in next year's budget, we, we, we meet. Um, where we're at with B and O, so which means the following year, the B and O is already being totally consumed. In, in our public state, and this is just. For our public safety, uh, contract for, for police, not, not public defender prosecutors doesn't cover that, there's just for police. So you can see the B and O, it's, there's a slight uptick through the years, right? And the inflator we put in this is six and a half percent, so the last several years, it's been growing at a much higher percent. But the inflator being conservative at six and a half percent. Means that, um, I mean, we, we double, we double that by, by twenty thirty one. And so we are going to need to find out a way to pay for public safety in the future.
The B and O though, isn't changing, and I think it should because of Lake Point, yes.
So Lake Point is not calculated into this, that will obviously bring more revenue in to help pay for these things, right? In B and O and in, in sales tax, property tax, so it, it will definitely be that, what's that? Yes. Yeah.
What are the, sorry, what are the gold bars or?
So the gold bars are just the changes in contract each year, so the increases that, that we see each year, and then the red line.
Okay.
Is our B and O tax. So that, I think, is, is a telling, uh, graph to look at. So of course, we've talked about these public defender, uh, by twenty thirty one, we're anticipating a two hundred fifty four. Percent increase, uh, jail, a thirty nine percent increase, court a seventy five percent increase. And prosecuting attorney a sixty percent increase. So these are, these are things that, um, are going to be very difficult, uh, to work on funding. So this is, um, general fund projections I wanted to, to walk through a little bit. So the red line is our total expenditures with the decision cards. That I included, not, obviously not the ones we talked about today. When I, when I did my first draft of, of funding certain decision cards, at twenty thirty one, we were over eleven million dollars. Uh, in the red, so we obviously, we pulled that back a lot, that puts us at, right now, about four million dollars. That black line is our ending fund balance, right, so we track that to see how healthy our, our funds are. And you can see that green line is that internal policy we've created of maintaining a twenty percent. Fund balance in our funds, so you can see by twenty thirty one, those start to intersect. Our, our ending fund balance and that twenty percent. And then obviously, the, the, the bars are, are the different, uh, revenue sources that come in. So you can see that doesn't paint a really wonderful picture. Um, but like I said earlier, it, it was, it was difficult to think about making some. Some real serious kind of budgetary decisions this year. Because if the B and O comes in higher, we, you know, we, we project it out pretty conservatively, we might get a hundred thousand or, or more. Than what we projected, uh, if the M P D is approved, that will offset some funds, and then obviously the twenty fifteen. Uh, public safety funding, if we get that, that's another seven hundred thousand ongoing. That helps that tremendously, we can see exact figures when we plug it into the, the forecast. Um, so. We wanted to make sure we all understood that we're in difficult budget times, we, we get that. But we didn't necessarily feel like we have to start slashing and cutting positions and programs. Because, uh, that will all depend on what happens next year. So depending on that, we may be there, um, during next year's budget cycle, um, just depending on how these things go. On the twenty fifteen, uh, police funding, I think I mentioned to council, that there are. An enormous amount of requirements to meet the threshold to receive that funding. One of the things we're working on at, at the state, I, I'm working on S C A's, uh, statewide agenda as well, is. Is, um, all the other funding sources, state legislature that you've given us for. Homelessness, housing, everything else have been really easy to apply for, but this public safety one. Is so difficult, most jurisdictions in the state are like, we, we can't even do it. So King County, you, you know, the most, um.
Easy to work with.
But, but, but one of, one of the more advanced, um, uh, police departments in the state, applied and, and failed. Because it's so difficult. So they'll, they'll apply again, we obviously cannot adopt that unless King County qualifies, because we're a contract city. So, so that's happening, um, on human services funding, the intent of, of, uh. House Bill fifteen ninety was that jurisdictions that adopt that. Will bond against the revenue to build affordable housing, that was the original intent, uh, from the legislature. No cities are bonding, uh, for this, because it doesn't bring in enough revenue to, to secure a, a bond, right? Um, and so, so they're using it to give to skip or other sources, or just banking it, we're banking some of ours right now. And that's, of course, the sixty percent, then there's the forty percent that can be used for all those wraparound services. So one of the thing, things that I included on S C A's legislative agenda. And that we'll work on as well is, is changing that split. If that split could be fifty fifty, that would give us ten percent more to put towards our community care program, those contracts we're working on. Yeah, so that would probably be another, could be another sixty something thousand, seventy thousand, that ten percent, so. I, I'd have to look for sure, but it's in that ballpark, so. So anyway, um, that's all we had to go over before we get to, to the, um. Uh, uh, forecast, so if you have any questions on these, happy to take those now, or we can just make that list of the items council would like to see. Uh, entered into the forecast.
I, I know we touched on this, but none of this is including the forecasted, this increase in population for commercial. Correct?
Uh, correct, yeah, it, it does not.
Build some guest room.
Uh, we could generally tell you, uh, you know, a dollar a square foot. Uh, in, in sales tax of commercial space, right, tell you when that's gonna happen.
When does the point development end?
Fifteen years plus five, right? Twenty seventeen, we signed it. That's okay, I know.
So thirty two.
So right now, we've got. We've got the budget. Before us, and then we've got the suggested. Decision cards that Regan and the team have suggested to us that are in the budget. And then we've asked to do. Harry's position at twenty four five, but there's offsetting funds for that. We asked for the police officer two hundred and, well, just say three hundred thousand. The. Equity cultural, cultural equity and social justice commission, three thousand dollars, and then thirteen thousand six hundred. That's what we have before us right now. Twenty four thousand five hundred.
And, and I would say that probably because we have that offsetting revenue and it won't really reflect on our ongoing, we may not. Need to plug that in, the money's there, it's a pot of blood we can use, and it's a one time, because it would just be for a year. It was not a decision card, I presented it a little bit earlier. I mean, there was a decision, sorry.
There was a decision card to make it a full time person. So we're just leaving her at the ten hours.
Yeah, for one year.
For one year, but you have to bring that back to us to take the one time funds, is that correct, or did?
You can make that decision now.
Okay, so. So take the one time funds from.
Opioid abatement, recovery, just over sixteen thousand, and then we need eight thousand three hundred from our fifteen ninety funds.
Is council good with moving forward to keep Harry on one more year, okay?
We'll assume Joe's a thumbs up.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make that happen.
And then, um. I know Debbie had brought up about doing concert in the park, but we are going to incorporate that into the Americas two fifty to increase one more. But then we can always come back next year if funds change around to increase more. So what, where, where we left that, is that correct? To add a, so we added one concert with the potential to maybe do another one if funding becomes available.
Yeah, and by adding a concert, you mean for the two fifty event?
For the two fifty event, yeah, as part of the, as part of the two fifty event.
As part of it.
If we can get the pro bono.
Take advantage of it, yes.
We can do more, so that's all we discussed, correct, of what we wanted to put in there?
We, we did discuss all those things, the three things that, that I had, that we need to plug into the forecast would be. The, the grant for the equity commission, the human service funding and police officer.
And I, I wanted to see a refund as the, what we're getting in refunds and the, uh, mitigation to. Yeah, and the mitigation to O T, that would be created when hiring someone, because you have to assume less overtime.
So, so the reconciliation is built into the budget, so it's not, it's already in there, it's not gonna change the.
I would like to see the.
But it gets eaten up by the O T.
Yeah, I wanna see before O T, I wanna see what it is while we get back.
Can I ask this? I know we, we are adding one concert to the twenty fifty, or two fifty.
As part of the two fifty.
Yes. Now, we also heard, um, from our residents that perhaps we could find sponsorship for more, if. We had residents that wanted to sponsor more, how would we go about doing that?
That's what I brought up, if we have funding available, then we can look at a future concerts.
We, we have.
If we can get entertainment. Pro bone or less than that would help.
We, we have a pretty robust sponsorship program, uh, actually, so, um, our, our team's doing it on. Every single event we hold, every athletic event we hold, there's, it's a whole sponsorship program we have, so. And, and that's your question, how we go about it.
Yeah, because someone made a comment, they thought their sponsorship covered it.
Right.
And seeing the actual dollar amount it takes to hold a concert, I am fairly confident we could say, ah, no. You know.
They're very small.
That was her.
I, I think I know who you're talking about.
Okay, sure, okay, okay.
On, uh, additional revenues, that we just started talking about sponsorship, I don't want us to lose. That's idea of potential sponsorship of the movie nights too, I don't know where, we talked about that, but. You know, it, it was genius.
So smart to do announcements, say announcements that way.
So, I don't know how much, but that's a, another. Ethan, I think you guys wrote that down to include that, right, for next year, put sponsorships on the movie screens before the movies?
Yeah, I thought that was a great idea, we've talked to staff already about it.
How about during the movie? Halfway through, exactly.
So I was volunteering at the fighting right after we talked about it at council, and I was like, hey, we should put, oh. It's not dark enough. The moment it gets just dark enough, at least while I was there.
Maybe the later.
The moment. And if, if it's like five minutes. It's not, as we're not, as long as we're not counting on like all this time.
Like the movies seen out, just flash up an image.
You can't see it is my point, it's not dark enough.
Ensure that it's getting seen, otherwise it's not fair to. Which means we we won't be able to take many.
That's all.
But you could also charge more for a sponsorship to not only put their logo up there, but to have them in person at the to get there and hand out goodies. I mean, that's just an idea.
These just get turned into commercials.
That's great.
It's handy, they don't carry what's.
For the children.
Not that we wanna put more work on Carla.
Wouldn't it be fun to have a karma video too?
Karma so do, karma can do all the things.
I want karma in a park.
So what else do you need from us today?
So so that that's it. We'll we'll get the reconciliation amounts so you can see those. And then I've just got the three different items that we can plug into the forecast.
And that totaled three hundred and sixteen sixty. Three sixteen six hundred.
I didn't total it, but I'll take your word for it. So the obvious issue is, as as we look at at that without, you know, having the interactive forecast, what it means is next year we're spending more than we're bringing in, right? So we need to figure out a way how we're gonna do that. Do we cut some programs for the police officer? Do we uh, take out of our reserve funds, something like that? You know, I I there's there's colas, right? The cola in the general fund is well, it's my job to give you the options.
You can't hire someone and then punish everybody else.
Yeah, I I get that, but there there's a way to save some money. The the hesitation with it is like we did two years ago with the salary survey, we discovered a lot of our positions were well underpaid compared to our comparable cities, so lowering colas gets you to that point, right? Yeah, so there's the public art fund. We put twenty two. We put twenty two thousand into that each year. They do have a fund balance of about forty five thousand right now.
Which they're saving for big projects.
A project that I started with the carbon issue, so I get it, like, you know.
They're doing the same thing.
Yeah, they're fun.
Talking away.
So anyway.
I know in past years you've like, I know we looked at like a list of things that like.
That we could cut like.
And it was easier because we could say, well, what we need to do is get to this now and now we can have it. I mean, cause some of these decision cards that were, I know we talked about like, do we really want the chairs? We thought, well, let's just leave it in, but we know we like push comes to shove, we'd rather have.
And and it's it was one time costs that aren't going to change much in in our, when we look at the forecast, right? It's just not going to really make a dent in it. It's the accumulative effect of the continuation of funding that really impacts that. So I I actually have, this is the list we went over, was it last year or the year before? Um, I started with cola, it got shut down. There's there's the traffic to the street fund, you know, we could reduce that, that would get them to about their fund balances where their their ending fund would be, so right right now, we're just giving the street fund enough from the general fund to keep them above the twenty percent fund balance, right? So if we took that away, then obviously dip below that. So those, the ones I just mentioned are the big ticket items. The other ones are five thousand here, eleven thousand there, two thousand there. You know, stuff like that.
But that's only one time funds, which doesn't.
These are all ongoing. Yeah, these are all ongoing.
We don't have that.
We don't have that list though.
No, I I can.
You send it out to everybody.
Okay, so here's the reconciliation numbers. So for twenty twenty two, we got back two hundred and seventy eight. For twenty three, we got back four twenty one. For twenty twenty four, we got back two hundred and thirty one. I can repeat it. Twenty twenty two, two hundred and seventy eight thousand three hundred and eighty one, I'll be specific. Twenty twenty three, four hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and fifty one dollars. And then twenty twenty four, two hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and seventy nine. So we didn't get twenty twenty five?
And how much are we putting in? That's what we're getting back.
So so we got two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty bucks per officer. Free vacancies.
It's two hundred and ninety one thousand dollars an officer.
Times three.
So nine hundred thousand.
Wait, that's our refunds after.
That's the refund. So so we pay our full contract cost, this is the refund we get back.
Yeah, but I'm curious also OT, OT is time and.
Okay, so uh, so last year we spent almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime.
I miss overtime.
It's a lot. Uh, now, if we added people, obviously that number's gonna go down some. You know, that window where we would place this person, they would eliminate some four hour overtime shifts, so that'd be nice.
But if we didn't do any overtime, that would come back in there. So so we spent four hundred and.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Which is essentially one and a half's human.
Yeah, but but if we didn't do any overtime, our reconciliation would have been.
Still. Fifty percent.
Would the team be sad to lose the OT? I know that's irrelevant really, but I mean, are it is the is the group like?
No.
To get OT or like, oh god.
I think there's too much. We already have some shifts that we're not able to fill. One of our big overtime workers is retiring, so. It's the.
He built a new house.
I won't talk about him specifically, uh, but he he worked uh, up to like two thousand hours of overtime a year. He was doing his high five. So for us, you get the highest five average per and then it's three year, you add two percent to your pension, so. Yeah, he did it the.
So it sounds like we really needed an officer.
It'd be nice to have another one just to replace him to begin with, but um, no, I think there's, we have plenty of overtime. It's not going away. You can get plenty of it through King County also if you really want it. It's it's everywhere, it's all time, it's almost always a place to get it, so that's not a concern.
A little bit of a hesitation using reconciliation, as as you know, to fund new officers. Because, you know, once those positions do get filled, although they haven't been filled in five years, then where are we at? Right? We've gotta come up with the money sometime, whether now or then.
So we spend less on overtime. But that's two lots.
So here's my question. So we do the one officer this next year, da da da, we have the money for it, not obviously ongoing because they're making us hold the spot, like we'll be able to afford that one. And then, since it's not really under contract, if at some point they say, oh, well, now you have to fill those two, I mean, we've.
We can say, no thanks.
We can say, no, we are. Yeah, we have the money to do it. I mean, we'd wanna be fully staffed, but at the same time, we, since there is no contract, we're not really. It's just an interlocal agreement.
Fill your spots.
Yeah, we can, we can eliminate.
Or we can hold them vacant.
Yeah, that's what she's saying is that removes the risk.
Right, so if they say, hey, hey, look, now we can fill these two, we can go eh, then the only thing is but we just, yeah, okay, so I think, yeah, it makes sense, but no.
And to clarify, that's one more on top of the one that's retiring. Who's also gonna.
Yeah, and we're gonna replace him already, we're already. No, we're not gonna go down, we're not gonna be four.
Need anything else?
I don't think so. No, so we're gonna talk revenues on Tuesday. Yeah, I think so, based on, yeah.
We're not talking about pride, I don't wanna be here all night.
I will, since I'm right handed.
I, yeah.
I do wanna say, obviously, that's a, that's a difficult issue that that people grapple with and organizations grapple with. But but your discussion was really civility in practice. And that's quite exceptional. It 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 really is because it can be an emotionally charged issue. But to have a group of people with diverse thoughts and ideologies come together and discuss it in disagreeing better. I think that's really exceptional and speaks uh, speaks volumes to this council, so thank you for that.
Well, and we're all supposed to be different. It would be so boring if we were the same. Strong believer in every, if there, yeah, if it's like me, I'd love it, but also hate it.
All right. Then I guess if that's all we have, um, then we will continue these revenue discussions and everything on Tuesday night. Well, I'm in the agenda.
Is there anything else we could look at?
Just, you can look at where could we pay for these?
Well, it, there's stuff. Questions about man.
Well, we're saving a lot of money because we don't have a city manager, so.
Yeah, but people start to think that's who we're.
Who's paying us?
So yeah, that was something council asked us. Oh, it's on the agenda.
It is.
Actually, council asked us to bring that back two years ago, each budget workshop, to talk about parks levels of service, so we can do that. We could email the document out to you or.
Yeah, and that the intent was because, and I know we have our perks and recommendations Tuesday, but it was because it's like, I will say, as an individual, I felt surprised by what they were telling us when we had not heard it from staff. And so when it, when we're surprised like that, it's hard to have a budget discussion about adding another person and and whatnot if we're not kept in the loop onto the, like, like clearly what's going on. I know we want it to all look good, but we kinda need to know if if staff can't do it.
No, I I get it. I I can tell you staff was surprised at the commission's comments that night too. Because staff obviously is aware of those issues that determine uh, that wasn't the year to do it, which we did it last year. So we were surprised at that as well.
Yeah, so I think the intent was to do a check in and and check with staff and see are our perks being maintained to a level that we can defend and that we're proud.
Would you like to have Don touch on that?
You guys wanna have it, or you want it to be emailed out? We can discuss it after we see it.
Either way.
We have a half hour.
Don, you prepared to review some of that with us?
Sure, I think Krista can share her screen. So from what I recall specifically, and we can provide more overall, but the going to this one, it was really the concern was Jenkins Creek Park. Currently, like what are our current levels of service were prior to adding an additional maintenance worker. Um, and so this right here shows just Jenkins Creek Park, not the parking lot or anything. Cause we had those separate resource plans for that, but this was like pre twenty twenty five. How many hours and what are we doing at Jenkins Creek Park? And so you can see down at the bottom, it was about a hundred and twenty three hours, shows you, you know, how much per month we're spending in, you know, whether it's picking up garbage, park inspection, things along those lines pre twenty twenty five. Um, then if you move over to current, what we're doing now on that tab. Thank you, perfect. So we we increased the garbage pickups, things along those lines, so not a ton, obviously, but we, you know, this is also adding more time to Jenkins Creek park, like the parking lot, obviously, and then founders and that type of thing with the additional, but we did put in more time for coming in and picking up garbage, things along those lines, mowing up in the upper and lower meadows. Um, and then you can see if you go to the next one over is the recommended, so ultimately we need like another two hundred and something hours to really get it to um, to a recommended level of service for that facility, so that's about four hundred and fifty annual labor hours. So to give an idea of kind of what staff is doing too, if, Krista, if you can switch to the other table. Sure, it probably takes a second here. Yeah, I'm sorry. This kind of gives during kind of the growing season. You can see what our parks maintenance, now that we've added a fourth person, what does it look like, especially during, you know, summer, that type of thing? What we'd consider our our growing season, you can see see, can you, is that everything, is it far to the left as it can go? Yeah, okay, it is. Okay, thanks. So you'll see kind of what the breakout is of uh, each of those staff, like what are what are they doing, how much time they're spending. So just to do a full system trash run, so that second day is two people, four hours to run through and and do that. So they're doing that on Monday and Friday. And then then you can see like the CCP though, you can see that they're running through that stuff every day. And then we're going to be doing that at Jenkins Creek Park now for the now that the restrooms added in that, so then you kind of see they're mowing the athletic field. Then on like, say Wednesday, you do like small park mowing, and then if you scroll down a little bit more. You kind of see which which parks they're hitting us when we talk about the small parks. Mowing and then the like painting, things along those lines can kind of move within that. But you have things like irrigation testing and adjustments that will happen through the week, you're you're blowing out the trails uh, every two weeks in the summer. Shrub beds are being done at the time of mowing currently, so we're we're taking care of that right now. We are considering looking at whether we roll that into our shrub bed maintenance for uh, CCP, but this was just kind of an overall, just a snapshot, obviously it doesn't get into the details, but just gives kind of an layout of kind of how their week work it week is for the the four individuals now.
Jennifer.
You pointed out there the, you know, the discrepancy between what would be preferable, the four hundred and fifty hours for Jenkins Creek versus the two twenty three that we're able to put in it now. Are the other parks similar in that discrepancy or are they closer to, you know, preferred goal?
And I can, I can follow back up with what those level of service we did at the summit where we showed uh, what it was that we're hitting in each park. So, but it is, we are doing better in that regard of all the parks because we're able to hit these and kind of be in a regular schedule, so the additional person uh, has really made a difference i- in that regard, but I would say that Jenkins Creek Park typically has been the one that has been short mostly be one, because of the size and stuff of it too, but that's where some of the lacking, or I said, time that's being spent there, that's we we went up on that, but I would say I'd have to look exactly on the other ones, but I don't think there's as much of a gap between current and recommended that we are on those than than say Jenkins Creek Park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, do we wanna have more discussion on this next year about what we need to do before budget season? Or do we want?
If there's big gaps at the other ones, we may, but. Otherwise, I'm curious what the proposed solution would be to get Jenkins Creek up to speed, because I think. With the parking lot and the bathrooms, we're going to have more people in there, and it's gonna be flagged to us as, as a more visible issue.
Right.
We probably do need to discuss it at, at some point.
And, and with, and, and with, uh, I'll say to that, um. We can, we can follow up and have a little bit more of, uh, information to you guys as far as, okay, where do we see some of those gaps? Obviously, we're still adjusting with the additional maintenance person, and we can see, how are, how are we doing? You know, what are those gaps in there and, um, letting you guys know, um, and then. We are, like, just because we're spending more time at Jenkins Creek, the parking lot, that type of thing, that has a pretty big, uh. You know, level of service, um, that we're maintaining with that, so that's where a lot of that is going, so it helps. Jenkins Creek Park for us to be going into there, but this was just isolating just the, the park itself and not the new addition, like the phase one.
I'll, I'll add that, I think a good time might be this time next year, once we've got a full season of people using the new Jenkins Creek Park. That'll give us a better idea on, is the current level of service working or, or not?
Can we bring that back before the budget workshop, so that we can be prepared? Even a week or two before.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we, Krista, why don't we add it to an agenda in September, next year?
And that's good, because the summer. Get a lot of that feedback too, from the public.
That'd be perfect.
Cool, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. Perfect, thanks, Don. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Well, thank you all very much for a very good discussion today, and like Regan said, it was very civil. Unlike some other places, but, um. I just appreciate working with each and every one of you, and it's. And thank you for coming out on a Saturday to spend your day off.
Nowhere we'd rather be.
Be at a BYU stadium.
No, because, because Regan's headed out for ICM. Thank you all very much. Thank you.